All right, off I go.
One, two.
Yes.
Should we swap?
Angela.
She's centre.
Because you're officially the deputy whip, so you get one of the fancy chairs where you face this way. You're official, yeah, we're all facing this way, so.
I know, I know.
I don't know, I didn't ask.
I'm just going to quickly about.
Hello?
The microphone's on all day. So it's. We don't know. So I can't start having.
Don't mutter, do you? Which is my holiday.
I know. No, my, it's not muttering, it's rolling in my eyes, that's my problem. I'm not sure.
For the right worshipful Lord Mayor of Sheffield, councillor Gail Smith.
Good afternoon, colleagues, members of the public, please be seated. May I welcome members to this meeting and the viewing public to this full council meeting which is being held at the Octagon Centre, Sheffield University. Please, can I ask the director of Leytonian Governance to announce the housekeeping arrangements?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. To help keep everyone safe, please maintain social distancing at all times. Please wear a face covering at all times within the venue unless you have an exemption. It can be removed once seated, but you may wish to leave it on. Hand sanitizer will be available for you to use. Please remain seated as much as possible during the meeting and do not congregate around exits and entrances. Follow any signage which is provided, such as one-way systems, to help keep you safe. If you have any concerns or are unsure, please ask a member of staff. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. Please, can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode? Roaming microphones will be used for councillors wishing to speak from the main floor of the meeting room. Please allow time for the democratic services officer to reach you before you begin to speak, so that you can be heard clearly. The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. Photography, video and sound recording of the meeting is permitted, but the Lord Mayor does have discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting, is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information or if a member of the public participating objects to being recorded. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be recorded should say so at the start of their speech and the Lord Mayor will suspend the permission to record their contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. I shall conduct these housekeeping announcements by stating that this meeting is scheduled to finish at 5.30. But I propose to adjourn the meeting at an appropriate time during the proceedings to give members the opportunity of a comfort break. Before commencing the formal items of business on the agenda today, I propose to hold a minute's silence in the memory of Sir David Amso, who was killed on the 15th of October. I think this is a reminder to all of us in political life that we have to stay safe and be vigilant. So sad that somebody who's worked so hard has to have his life ended like this. So we're going to stand and have a minute's silence, please. Please be seated. Apologies for absence. Councillor Sue Auckland, councillor Igbowal, councillor Miskell, councillor Priestley, councillor Marouf, councillor Teale, councillor Gibson, councillor Drabble, councillor Johnson, councillor O'Rourke, councillor Rooney, councillor Sahid and councillor Sutter. Are there any further apologies for absence? Thank you. Item three on the agenda is declarations of interest. This is an item of business, this, sorry, this item of business is to enable members of the council to declare an interest in any item on this agenda. When declaring an interest, the member should refer to the item of business, state whether it is pecuniary or personal interest and outline the reasons for their declaration. Does any member wish to declare an interest? Thank you. It's at this point in the agenda where I'm going to make an appeal to my colleagues sat out there. I'm doing a skydive on the 16th of December. So please, if you could dig deep into your pockets and sponsor me, I hope to be coming back to the January meeting. And also on the 16th of December, if any of you, like Joe Scarborough, he's very kindly offered to do an evening, talk to us about his life and some of his paintings. So if you were interested, please get in touch. Item four on the agenda, public questions and petitions and other communications. Public questions can be asked and petitions can be presented at council meetings. Questions or petitions are required to be submitted two clear days in advance of these Covid-safe meetings to ensure public attendance at the meeting to be managed in a safe way. For this meeting, I think there are three petitions that will be presented and questions will be taken from members of the public. Three further petitions will be received in the absence of the presenter. A period of 60 minutes is allowed in total for ordinary petitions and public questions. Can I call upon the chief exec to announce petitions? And may I request that petitioners be brief and keep within their limit of three minutes? May I also require, sorry, request the executive members in answering their questions to keep it to five minutes? May I ask that the questioners be as brief as possible when asking questions and that the executive members keep their response as short as possible? Chief exec?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've received a joint electronic and paper petition containing 343 signatures requesting the council to create 10,000 new green jobs in Sheffield within two years. Joan Miller wishes to address the council and it's recommended that the petition is referred to councillor Paul Turpin, executive member for inclusive economy, jobs and skills.
Okay, 10,000 new green jobs for Sheffield. Tackling inequalities, tackling youth unemployment, tackle climate and nature crisis, that's the deal. And what are our new green jobs? They're decent, future-proof jobs. Jobs that reduce carbon emissions, retrofitting, for example. Jobs that restore nature, nature-friendly farming, for example. Low-carbon jobs that help us to thrive. Carers, health workers, teachers, artists, firefighters. 10,000 new green jobs is also a simple headline, a banner we could perhaps rally under, a communication tool. After all, reducing emissions isn't of interest if you are hungry or financially stressed. This is an anniversary. I personally came here 10 years ago and I presented virtually the same petition then for 10,000 climate jobs. Perhaps I've aged disgracefully, but I'm wearing purple and I'm going to ruthlessly compare you to other authorities who are doing much, much better than us. And Sheffield, we can and we must catch up. We must race to zero. So retrofitting, one pound investment in, three pounds out into the economy. Highly skilled, semi-skilled, entry-level jobs, jobs in the supply chain. South Yorkshire has the further education budget. Manchester has trained 1,000 people. Sheffield, zero. Community renewables, Energize Barnsley has put 321, has 321 social housing properties with solar panels, 16 other properties. Sheffield, I think it's zero. No capital cost to Barnsley council, just the cost of an employee's time. Good food, Barnsley, a partnership again, everybody eats, they say. Sheffield could do so much more if leased some council land for urban agriculture. We could lead the country, 20 jobs per 20 acres. In Leeds, the leadership of the climate and nature emergency is the executive director for finance. I don't know who the executive leadership is in Sheffield and there's nothing on the website. It's 1,000 days after the emergency was declared and there's still nothing on the council website. Coventry has a builders' charity shop, as many other cities, a vast warehouse of pre-loved doors and windows, et cetera, that are available for reuse instead of going into a furnace, a starting point for the circular economy. I know that we now have a 10-point plan, it's good enough. So please create the structure to implement it. There was a fantastic suggestion for a network of action-focused task groups and these are some of the task groups we need. A green jobs and skills task group, communications, alternative finance, retrofitting, renewable energy, waste recovery, local nature-friendly food, nature recovery. Please tell me that the action-focused task groups are going to start next week. We can create these jobs and Sheffield City Council must efficiently enable this. We can do this at speed because we have a solid community sector and other potential partners that are ready to roll and there are effective models we can simply copy. So finally, councillors, I commend this petition and let's race to zero.
Thank you. Councillor Turpin, can you respond, please?
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, Joan, for the petition. Yeah, it's not been good enough, like you said, 10 years, it's not, it's not good enough, absolutely not. But we have begun work on it. I've asked officers that I work with to get cracking and let's get some actual action plan in place. So work has begun, a report, and I was hoping that it would have been ready. I was hoping it was going to be ready for the first Wednesday of the month and it wasn't, I thought I had a reprieve, it's still not ready, I'm afraid. But hopefully, perhaps next week. So there's, there's a lot of opportunity here for new jobs and new skills, but we have to put the pieces together. You're right when you say that other authorities are ahead of us. Manchester is a fantastic example. So what are we thinking about this? It's, I will say that there has been some disappointing discussions with some colleges who are continuing to train young people to fix petrol and diesel engines. Still training young people in gas heating systems. But we are, but we are trying, we're trying to persuade them that that's a bad idea. And I know that, I spoke to a mechanic who's mid-50s and asked him if he was going to retrain and he said, I'm not going to bother because by the time I'll need to work on electric vehicles, I'll be in my 60s and I'll just retire. Now, to train young people to fix those combustion engines is actually quite harmful, I think, to them and to society. And when you think in 20 years' time, they'll be halfway through their working life and their skills will be out of date. So we really want them to acknowledge their part in the community and to start training these people properly. Now, we have had some early discussions about whether we could have a climate college in Sheffield or in South Yorkshire and that would be fantastic. And like I said, those discussions are underway, although very much in their infancy. We've got a bit of an egg and chicken problem when it comes to retrofitting installation because there is money in South Yorkshire for the free qualification, but the qualification is not a training qualification, it's a qualification where people have to evidence that they can do the work. So, you know, how do you get somebody who doesn't, who doesn't have the skills to get the qualification when they have to be doing the job? You know, it's really ridiculous. So we've, we've got some thoughts on this. And I've got some statistics for you here as well, actually. There's, the local government association did a report in 2020 and have established that there are just under 200,000 full-time workers in England's low-carbon and renewable energy economy. But by 2030, that number will have more than tripled. Around 700,000 people will be working in that sector. And again, it will double again over the next couple of decades.
Can I ask you to get on with answering the questions, councillor?
Your, your five minutes has already gone.
Okay, so, yes, Joan, I'll keep you informed and when we get some more solid information, I'll get back and we can talk about it more than.
Thank you.
I've received a joint electronic and paper petition containing 162 signatures requesting the council to add a 20 mile-per-hour speed limit to the proposed parking scheme for Park Hill and Norfolk Park. Nadine Fisher wishes to address the council. It's recommended that the petition is referred to councillor Douglas Johnson, executive member for climate change, environment and transport.
Do we have?
Hello? Good afternoon, dear councillors. My name is Nadine Fisher, this is my daughter, Matilda, and we are local residents of the Norfolk Park area. And we came here today to hand in our petition to the council to add 20 miles-per-hour speed limit to the already proposed parking scheme of the council in the Norfolk Park and Park Hill area. Our local streets are unfortunately heavily congested. They have been built in the pre-war area and the residents there, most of them, since the pandemic at least, have two cars or even more depending on how many people are living in the households. So our roads are often parked on both sides, which makes, in addition to obviously making it difficult to park, generates a lot of danger in terms of crossing the roads. We have seen in the last about six years a huge increase of young families with a lot of very young children and obviously the residents that used to live there have now become older. So when this petition was actually sparked by a particular incident from a friend of mine who had tried to put her son into the car and was, the wing mirror was clipped by a car driving through the road. As we put this petition together and then spoke to our neighbours and friends, it became clear that this was actually not an isolated incident, but something that has happened very often or has been witnessed very often. And so much so that some of our local residents have actually gone as far as putting their own little signs of 20 is plenty into their windows to discourage people from speeding. Now, we understand that our, our road in particular, which is the triangle around Stafford Road and Ingham Road, as well as the opposite side of Gunborough Road, Donnington Road and Holdings Road, they're what we call rat runs. They connect big streets that lead into the city and they are obviously on a hill, like many roads in Sheffield, which just encourages speeding naturally because you either try to drive up fast or you come down a road and you naturally start to speed. So our proposed proposal is that you kindly add 20 is plenty speed limit signs to the already existing proposal in the parking scheme, which is actually in line with a council policy that has been adopted in 2010-11 and as far as I'm aware, has already been implemented in about 18 areas in the city. Personally, we think it would be an absolute win-win-win situation for us as local residents, for the drivers who use our roads as cut-throughs and obviously for the council. It just strengthens the opportunity to implement a policy of theirs. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your petition. Can I call upon councillor Johnson to respond, please? You have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for the petition there. I don't know if the mic's working, but if it is, then thank you for bringing the petition. As you say, you know, it's incredibly important and, you know, to have a little person there to make the point about why we want 20 mile-an-hour zones in the city. It's a really important thing for road safety. And I don't need to remind you that, you know, if you have the misfortune to be hit by a car, it's far worse if it's going at a speed above 20 miles an hour. It is really important. I mean, personally, I've supported the idea that really all residential areas, you know, excluding our tiered roads, should be 20 miles an hour right across the city. As it happens, we've got this rather piecemeal approach of steadily clawing our way around the city to build up this set of 20 mile-an-hour zones bit by bit. And I'm informed by the officers that there are currently 89 of these zones still to do and they're ranked in some sort of order of priority, which I don't have the detail of, but it's some sort of priority based on road safety and that the Norfolk Park, Norfolk Road one round Park Hill is still on number 32. Your point is, of course, that it would be presumably cheaper and easier to put in at the same time as the planned parking zone in that area, which isn't, of course, the first parking zone to do, that's already in the queue, but will be coming hopefully relatively soon. You would have thought it's simpler to put in all the infrastructure at the same time. The impression I have from the officers, who actually do know about such things, is that it isn't quite as straightforward as that. So I'm not going to promise that there is anything additional to do there. But again, it's down to availability of funding and also resources of staff. And, you know, just to reassure you that the long-term aim of the strategy of the council is to establish 20 miles an hour as the maximum. council is to establish 20 miles an hour as the maximum, you know, in all appropriate residential areas of Sheffield. So we, we have finally pushed that through. But I'm not going to hold out hope this can happen immediately. But I think I will personally come back and have a look at that and just check whether there is any possibility of bringing in the speed limit in with the parking zone. But thank you for coming today, all of you.
Thank you.
I've received an electronic petition containing 47 signatures requesting safety measures at Peter Street Woodland. Karen Malone wishes to address the council and it's recommended again that the petition is referred to councillor Douglas Johnson in the absence of councillor Alison Teale at this meeting.
My petitions regarding Peter Street Woodland in Elsmead part of Sheffield. There's a few members of Pittsmore Pickers litter picking group that are going every Saturday morning to try and clear out the woodland that's full of fly tipping, needles, litter that we're trying to clear out. The problems are that the woodland's so dense at the moment, it needs all the undergrowth clearing out. We want the trees, we want bushes for the wildlife, we don't want them to be affected at all, but we do want it to be safe for wildlife, people and pets to go in. At the moment, there's a skip yard just at the back of Pittsmore, of the woodland and it's not fenced off. And so all the litter that's piled high in the skip yard is blowing out all over the woodland and so that needs fencing off adequately. We'd like cameras putting up in the area because people come from far and wide to fly tip in the area. We found fly tipping from Doncaster and places because it's a, it's a hidden place really for people to just go and offload all the rubbish. The main thing is cutting back the bushes, I think, and thinning out the trees to expose the drug dealers in there because there's a lot of drug activity taking place at the moment. There's piles of needles under several trees. We have got sharp spins that we use, but there's just so many needles. If the woodland was thinned out, this would show, show up what's happening in there and I think the drug dealers would move on. There's not enough bins, there's residents without black bins in the area as well. We identified quite a few on Sutherland Road and there's probably a few in Carwood Estate as well that don't have a black bin, partly because they're, if they're English, they don't understand how to order a bin and the other thing is the cost of getting a black bin. One of the Pittsmore Pickers members did a fundraising event where he raised, I think it was over £200 to buy bins for these residents. People, local people shouldn't have to be buying bins for residents that haven't got one, these should be provided. If landlords aren't going to provide them, they should be provided free because a lot of the residents, especially on Sutherland Road, didn't know what to do with the rubbish. It was mounting up in the backyards and then when they'd got so much in the backyard, they started taking it over to Sutherland Road woodland and dumping it in there. Sometimes they were seen even emptying the bags into there so they could reuse the black bags. Once they saw us one Saturday morning clearing out the woodland, they started to do the same. And even though they had put some of the rubbish there, they realised that it was the wrong thing to do and they started clearing it out. We've had Mark Jones on our side, councillor Mark Jones, that's been a really valuable member of the team and he's come along most Saturday mornings and helped us to start clearing out this woodland. We've also done other areas of Sheffield, but this is the area that we're concentrating on at the moment. So what we're asking for is for all residents to have a bin, for the bushes and the woodland to be thinned out so it's safe for wildlife pets and so people can start to use it. I've known people that have lived in that area for decades and said that they want to be able to walk the dog in there, to walk the children through there, to just be able to go through as a family and enjoy the woodland, something that they're just not able to do currently. And so if we can, cameras to put up to be, to try and combat the fly tipping and to identify the people that are doing it. Thank you.
Thank you to the petitioner. Can everyone hear clearly because I can't? Is it just me? Is everybody? Okay, that's fine. I think we're getting a bit of feedback.
Lord Mayor, if I may, I think, having wandered around the room a little bit, apologies to the, to the petitioners, it does seem to be particularly bad in this corner and down that end and over there, it does seem to be better. So I think there is some issue with the, with the speakers over here. I did speak to the guy on the sound desk, I think he might have a look at it.
Thank you for that. Perhaps something can be done and we'll continue. Is it you councillor Johnson that's going to answer that because councillor Teale's not here? Sorry councillor Turpin. I know, it is difficult. I honestly could not hear that at all, which is so sad because I do take an interest in petitions. Councillor Johnson please.
Thank you, thank you for the petition, which I've heard twice because of course I could hear it coming in this way, but also through the speakers this way with a slight delay. So probably like everything else, you've not got an answer for ages and then you'll literally get two at once now, so sorry about that. In relation to the woodlands, I'm just standing in today for councillor Alison Teale, who's self-isolating with Covid, I'm afraid. In, in relation to the woodland there, you raise some really good points about that and, and actually it's a really, it's an area woodland, I know, with a lot of potential that's been historically underused, but actually the people who have used it, I know, have, you know, found it, you know, quite a relaxing area. It's very sad when it gets overrun with drug use and, you know, once you start finding needles in there because that then becomes a no-go area for so many people. So I think, I'm not going to make any promises, I'm going to take this back and I will ask a report back to councillor Teale. I'll probably have to talk to my other colleagues on the executive and we'll go back to officers with this really bundle of things we've got here. So the suggestions about the woodland, in particular the fly tipping, you know this already, but I'd always encourage people to just continue to report fly tipping when it happens, as well as getting it cleared up. It's very helpful for our Streets Ahead team to have a log of when these incidents are happening, of the type of them, et cetera. And there was also, yeah, and about the, the black bins. Actually, a really interesting point you're bringing forward here, talking about people actually fundraising in the community to save up to buy black bins for neighbours because they haven't got them. You know, if, if there was a sign of anything about our waste management system going wrong, then, you know, that's it. Actually, a really important issue and one of those things that does contribute to fly tipping and just litter blowing about with bins overflowing because people end up having to share them there. So I'll just say it's a whole bundle of things to go back there. But thanks for actually your part in the community about doing that. And I know that, I'm sure you've got a bigger patch of your litter clearing than most people in, who work for Streets Ahead. And I don't know if I've told you, I've had some unsolicited comments favourably about, you know, just the visible presence of being out there for as a member of the community doing that bit of litter picking. It shouldn't detract from the fact that we're actually paying people to do this service, although of course there's, there's always still more rubbish than we can really cope with. But thanks for that, I'll take this away, I'll pass that on. And I imagine, I should pass it back also to the, the local councillors because there might be an issue about them using some of the funding that they've got to sort out the, the one-off problems of, you know, the costs of bins or whatever. But I'm not making any promises, not putting any, you know, direct burden on, on the councillors there, but I'll, I'll have to liaise with them. But thanks, I'll bring the petition, it highlights an important issue.
Thank you. Can I just ask that we bring Mr Slack and Mr Crossland, yeah, no, into the, into the chamber, ready to ask their questions please. Chief Exec.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've received an electronic petition containing nine signatures requesting motorcycle barriers on the ganne between Bartle Road and Ledbetter Road. There is no speaker to the petition. It's recommended that the petition is referred to councillor Douglas Johnson in the absence of councillor Alison Teale at this meeting. Yep. I've received an electronic petition containing 22 signatures requesting motorcycle barriers on the public footpaths running onto Jaunty playing fields, running behind Jaunty Road and Bas Green close. There is no speaker to the petition. Again, it's recommended that the petition is referred to councillor Douglas Johnson in the absence of councillor Alison Teale at this meeting. And finally, I have received an electronic petition containing 79 signatures requesting A clarification for private hire drivers regarding bus gates and bus lanes in the city and B the council to undertake a policy review of private hire vehicle specification. There is no speaker to the petition. It's recommended that the element regarding bus gates be referred to councillor Douglas Johnson, executive member for climate change, environment and transport, and the element regarding private hire vehicle specification be referred to councillor Poorwood, executive member for housing, roads and waste management.
Thank you. Thank you Chief Exec. The next item on the agenda is questions from members of the public. May I remind questioners of my earlier statement requesting that they be brief as possible when asking questions and that the executive member keep their responses short and succinct? This is to ensure that we keep to time and use our time properly. Thank you. Can I ask Mr Slack to come to the microphone please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Though I must comment, the last band I saw on this stage was, was a bit younger and a bit more rock and roll. But having said that, my question today is about the local area committees and I'd like to draw attention to a weakness in the current framework of the local area committees and in particular to the use of delegated powers. Currently, it's planned that LACs will meet only four times per year and that, as a result, at least in my south LAC, a decision has been made to allow officers to make delegated decisions up to £5,000 for emerging issues. This may not sound like a great expense, but for illustration, it's half the annual allocation to the Graves Park Ward. Furthermore, there has been no consultation on this decision, as according to the minutes, none is required. In addition, the procedures for the LACs seem to rule out making decisions by all councillors except at formal meetings. This further exacerbates the issue, denying 11 of the 12 councillors from having a say in such circumstances. Altogether, these circumstances aggregate to deny the citizens any role in participating in effective decision-making and also excludes 11 of 12 local councillors from decisions between formal meetings. The power to make decisions is therefore effectively vested in the person of the chair. The local area committee is mirroring the very situation that led to the recent referendum and perpetuates the exclusion of most councillors and all residents in decision-making. So will the leader review the scheme of delegation that allows this undemocratic process to arise? And will the governance committee review the procedures around the local area committees to prevent so much power residing in the person of the chair? Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you for your question, Mr Slack. May I call upon the leader of the council to respond please?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Thanks, Lord Mayor. Thanks Nigel for, for the questions mate. I'll take them in order, but what I'd like to do is predicate my answers by saying, what we start off with in local area committees will not be where we end up. They are a living, breathing beast and as you see today on the agenda, there is a motion about the local area committees. So these are the changes with, with demands and as you know, we're moving to the committee system next year, which will also help that. So I'll try and answer these questions as best I can. The delegation only applies to the budgets allocated to the LACs, such as the £100,000 allocated to each LAC by the leader. Ward pots are separate budgets, not under the control of the LACs and ward pot decisions are always made in conjunction with councillors with an officer's decision and in consultation. Your next question regarding, in addition to the procedures, it is not lawful for committees to make decisions except at formal meetings held in public. All LAC members were jointly involved in making the decision to delegate the authority for limited spending decisions to an officer. The delegation enables some activity when requires expenditure to be carried out between the LAC meetings. The next question regarding altogether those circumstances aggregated to deny residents. I'm saddened that residents feel that that is the way that we're trying to go. We are absolutely trying to make this more transparent and any suggestions that we can do so will be took on board. The power to make these spending decisions is vested in the officer. It is not and lawfully cannot be vested in the chair or any other single member. Executive decisions may be delegated by the leader to the executive, a committee or of the executive, and individual executive members or an officer, the leader's scheme of delegation. From which the LAC delegations are derived provides that an area committee may further delegate to an officer. An officer delegation may, as here, include provision that it must be taken in consultation with a member, that the ultimate decision must be the officer's and if the officer is simply rubber stamping what the members wants, so that is a member who is really the decision-maker, then the decision will be ultra-verse. I've read that statement, so just in case I got that wrong at all, it would be a bit of legal for you. Local area decisions may only be made collectively by the LAC or by an officer under authority delegated by the LAC and by all, LAC decisions must be based on community engagement, which is how residents may participate in the work of the LACs. Under the committee system next year, decision-making may be delegated by full council rather than by the leader in person, as of now. The committees, subcommittees and working party or officers and a committee may, by a collective decision at the formal meeting, further delegation to officers, as the LACs have done here, but there will be no decision-making powers for any one individual member. As you can feel from that, there is quite a bit of work in those committees for next year for members going forward. Your question about the LAC marrying the very situation that led to the recent referendum and perpetuates the exclusion of most councillors and all residents in decision-making, I think I've already said, I feel sad and disheartened if that is what members of the public are feeling and I will, as your question says, visit the scheme of delegations to make quite clear that these local area committees are for the public and for delivery of our communities and those members will listen to those communities and make those decisions. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Can I call upon Mr Crossland to come to the microphone please and ask his question?
Good afternoon councillors. So I've been here twice this year already to talk about speeding in Mosburgh, but since you've ignored these requests, there has been two additional crashes, one in October involving several cars and another only last night. Now, I'm pleased that the recent local area committee will be organising a public meeting. That is good news and hopefully we get to discuss this important issue, but the local area committee is only given £1.44 per head in the South East. That's not even enough to buy a Mr Whippy ice cream, let alone road safety measures. So residents like me are bitterly disappointed at your lack of action, so I'm asking today, when will you finally tackle speeding in Mosburgh?
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Johnson? Thank you, sorry, to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor and thank you Curtis. On the speeding in Mosburgh, speeding is a, is a police enforcement issue. It's, it's not the council that enforces speeding, but there's a number of things that can be done there. What's, what's of interest is that, now, I did attend a meeting specifically about speeding in Mosburgh and to be fair, it was, I was asked to attend by one of the councillors in the ward. One of the things I stressed in the meeting was actually it's important that it is cross-party because it's obviously a political issue in Mosburgh and it's important that all the ward councillors are involved with this. Not sure whether that's actually happened and when I get a chance to follow that up, I think I'll want to know, you know, whether... I think I'll want to know whether it's genuinely being treated as an issue in that ward or not. I don't know. At that meeting, councillor Downing was there, but also Alan Billings as the Police and Crime Commissioner, and the point was made, speeding is a matter for the police to enforce. What's also interesting and new is that road safety is apparently due to be included in the new Police and Crime Commissioner's priorities for the police, and that's an important step forward. That, of course, is across South Yorkshire, it's not just specific to Mosburgh, but I was indicating that the commissioner could actually use perhaps Mosburgh as a pilot place, as it's an area where there's been a lot of political interest in it. And there was also the MP there, Clive Betts, MP, who was keen to see something done. Now, that's fine. The advice is actually because it's a local issue there, and of course, actually speeding isn't solely an issue in Mosburgh, I'm sure it is a problem, I don't want to deny that at all, it's also an issue in other areas. It's probably the local area committee or the ward that is best placed to have a look at that. So what I was trying to say is, actually, if it is a priority for the local area committee to have a look at speeding in that particular area, and if that's more of a priority than other areas in the South East local area committee, then that is something that they could formulate a plan around, and there is some funding attached to that for where there needs to be done. So it's pushed back to see if it is a priority in that local area committee. And as I said, I ask that it is properly done cross-party so that all ward councillors are involved and not just the ones who were invited to that meeting that I attended. So that's partial answer. There's probably some following up to do on that, so I'm happy to keep looking into that, but I'm also kind of hoping that someone will take some action on that. So I will have to follow up with all three ward councillors there, so thank you.
I hope you do, councillor Johnson.
Indeed, yeah. We need to speak, yes.
That concludes the business on public questions. We now go on to item five on the agenda, members' questions. Questions, are there any questions of urgent business? I have not been notified. No? Okay, so we'll move on to councillors' questions. Page what? Oh, I haven't got them. Lots of amendments. All right, wait a minute, wait a minute. Do apologize, colleagues, this desk is very small and everything's underneath my folder, so we'll start again. So now we're on to supplementary questions, written answers from executive members to questions submitted by members of the council. All members are circulated with these questions at the meeting, and this item of business is to provide an opportunity for members who had submitted a question to ask a supplementary question for each question they asked. So we will go to page one. Are there any supplementary questions on page one? Councillor Mohammed?
Thank you. Question one, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Leader of Council, councillor Fox, for your answer, in particular, the food festival that's taking place in the city centre, and you're looking at doing Her Majesty's Platinum Jubilee celebrations there, that's welcome news. Given what Mr Crossland just said earlier, that his area gets £1.44 per head in terms of LAC money funding, would it be possible, councillor Fox, to go away and look at potentially ring-fencing a pot of money for each of the LACs to actually be able to hold, whether it's a street party or a party in the park or wherever the local councillors feel, to ensure that in localities that may not access the city centre because of public transport or other access issues, that they also take part in these very important celebrations that are going to be happening next year for Her Majesty the Queen?
Councillor Fox?
Thanks, Lord Mayor, thanks councillor Shafan. Yes, is the one question, is yes, we can look at it, but I'm sure councillor Kate McDonald will be kind of gritting her teeth at the moment, knowing full well that the budget that we've got, but every LAC area has got £100,000, and I would imagine some of the communities will love to look towards that, but I will have a conversation with councillor Teal when she's back regarding the parks and see if there is some issues that we can raise within those parks as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. We're now on to page two.
No, we're still on page one.
Oh, sorry, sorry. It's one.
It's just a suggestion to councillor Fox, thank you for your answers. I understand there's been a delay and I only got the answers on Monday. Would it be possible for officers to incorporate your answers into this document when it's on the council's website? So at least, you know, I might not be terribly happy with the answer because I think it's a non-answer, but at least let the public see what the answer was. Otherwise, people will see that I posed a question and it says that you sent me an answer, but no one will know what that answer was.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Mohammed. Yes, obviously, I have no problem with that. As you say, you can ask a question, it might not be the answer that you get back that you want, but there's no problem having it printed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Page two.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's, is this working?
My, yeah, off and on.
Hello? Yeah, mine's on. Right, okay. Page nine, councillor Fox, thank you for your answer in terms of actually saying that in principle you're not always going to insource. Can I ask then, do you think it was a mistake, given the experience that many council tenants have seen in the last year or so, in particular those that have been highlighted by councillor Sophie Thornton, that insourcing council housing repair services was a mistake?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Mohammed. No, I don't think it was a mistake. We have got lessons to learn. I don't stand here with any glee of what some of our tenants are going through and the legacy of what our tenants are going through. We are stretching every sinew, A, to catch up with those repairs, B, to get in front, but also looking at systems of work, looking with our workforce. So I totally agree where that question comes from, but no, I don't disagree at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Marouf, have you got a supplementary question? I saw your hand. Please, please ask your question.
Nope.
Just speak, just keep speaking, keep going, keep going.
You need to shout up because we can't hear the microphone.
Another mic?
Another mic, please.
Another mic.
Thank you, that's better. I've lost the venom of the question now. Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for the comprehensive answer there from the leader. I'm sure the leader is as concerned as I am that this is quite a significant number, four and a half million being spent on consultants and locums. Could you give me an undertaking that this will be looked into and this number be reduced because obviously we do have a crisis in the council as well? I'm sure you will agree with me, leader. Thank you.
Councillor Fox?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and yet it was a question worth waiting for. Councillor Marouf, thank you. No, but seriously, councillor McDonald is constantly checking up with finances, everybody's acutely aware of the dire, dire situation that we're in. For the first time in my 20 years of being an elected member, I've never seen a budget with such a bigger deficit, and I'd really fear about where we're going to go to get this over the line. We are looking at everything. I can assure all members we are looking at everything. No stone will be left unturned. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Fox. Councillor Levery?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Question four, councillor Fox, on youth services. We've got a reviewed operating model to be presented next year in January, so one presumes the cost of this new operating model will be determined then. So that being the case, what has the additional £2 million for this year been put into, bearing in mind we've more or less kept things as it is until we get the new operating model in? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We've just been speaking totally about the dire situation of the council's budget, but last year we was welcome to put forward the £2 million investment into youth services. As members know, we've now took youth services back in house. We can now announce today that the youth strategy will be winging its way through the process yourselves, and the main plank will be that every ward in this city will be guaranteed a minimum, a minimum of three youth sessions in every ward, and we will be putting extra effort and money into those areas where we need to make that targeted approach. So I hope that answers councillor Levery's question, Lord Mayor. We are really proud of this as it's a major plank in that youth strategy going forward. That's what you get if you vote Labour. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Are there any further questions on page four? Moving on to page five.
Lord Mayor?
Councillor Mohammed?
Just wondering, given that councillor Johnson is standing in for councillor Teal, could I at least pause the question, councillor Johnson, and you can at least take the question and probably not answer it, but at least get back to me? So in the answer, councillor Teal says I and other councillors have received some complaints. So who are the other councillors and what is the number of the some complaints? And is it the same person complaining to all councillors or is it different people? And the second bit is that if diesel generators are bad for people, are they just bad in parks or are we looking at elsewhere as well, their use on any other council or land, particularly the city centre? Because I did notice when we were at the COP demo in Devonshire Green that there were diesel generators in operation there.
Councillor Johnson, are you prepared to answer that?
Yes, thank you. Just briefly, first of all, when it says some complaints, so I've only just seen this answer, it's necessarily one of those questions that can't be answered because actually that will include all the sort of casual conversations people have about complaining about diesel generators and Devonshire Green, like you just mentioned, which arguably is a complaint. It'll be logged with different departments of the council, but in different ways. It's not a question that's easy to answer. So actually, I'm proposing not, I'm not going to take any action on this, I'm not going to waste officers' time by trying to come up with an answer that's necessarily going to be a bit artificial, it'd just be a fairly arbitrary number. Completely at the point, though, that, yeah, we all need to deal with the issues of this, and diesel generators, diesel vehicles, you know, parks, next to parks, roads everywhere, we know they all cause harm to people's lungs and it should be a priority being dealt with. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Are there any further questions on page five? Councillor Levery?
Lord Mayor, the issue with travellers continues to be...
Can you tell us which question you...
Question one.
Thank you.
Thank you. The issue with travellers continues to be a major headache, and it appears that it's costing the council tens of thousands of pounds to site harden round parks and various other areas across the city. I did ask in question one, why are we not putting in temporary arrangements so that the travellers who come in July and August and visit the city every year can go to temporary arrangements until a permanent decision is made on transit arrangements under the local plan? Thank you.
Councillor Johnson, yes, please.
Thank you. I've no idea about the answer to that, so I'll ask officers to get back to you. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further supplementary questions on page five? Moving to page six. Page seven. Page eight. Yes?
Oh, hello. I just wanted to ask a question on question number two on page eight. People are in Jordanthorpe scared and horrified by recent events where, for example, a firework was thrown at a child in a pram. So I'd like to ask, how much is the council spending on the current, which has been cited as very much unfit CCTV system in the Jordanthorpe housing office? And after serious local crimes, such as the ram raid on the shops and this horrible firework attack on a child, do you not think it's time to reconsider rather than just say it's too expensive to replace it?
Thank you. Yeah, can you answer that, councillor Johnson?
In Jordanthorpe, I can't answer it, I don't know, but why, again, why don't you take it away, ask the officers for that? Just thinking, I mean, if it is a priority, and I don't know about that, I understand the CCTV there is pretty ropey and outdated, again, might be a priority for LAC funding to upgrade it, might be.
Thank you. Are there any further questions on page eight? Page nine? I thought, I just didn't know where you were sat, Barbara, sorry.
It's not, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Apparently it's intermittent.
Which question?
It's question one.
Thank you.
Right, I mean, sort of basically, it's about PowerPoints. Do you have a timescale for when this will, for this programme? And will local councillors be kept informed, including Ecclesdale councillors, because it does affect Milaisa's Park and Endcliff Park?
So that is also to councillor Teal. Councillor Johnson, it's your show this afternoon.
Yes, I'm not very good at being Alison, I don't think I'd get an answer for that. Though as the answer that's been provided is saying that there's no specific programme, then it's probably going to be hard to put the timescale on, I'm afraid.
Have you got a further question, councillor Masters?
Yes, it's question three. Now, I was told in September, and I've got the paper here, a written response to follow from the council. I haven't yet had the written response, so the fact that sort of, you know, the report was for the Chinese corporation, Chinese investors, is news to me. Could I have the response, please, the written response?
I'm sure that will be noted, councillor Masters, and we'll ask for it to be answered perhaps at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Have you any further questions?
Yes, it's question four. Now then, sort of part B, it's about the terms of the new tender. Now, bearing in mind that sort of whatever happens to question one about electric PowerPoints, sort of how will this be, how will traders be, how, sorry, how will the tender be affected by the timescale or the potential investigation to putting in more PowerPoints?
Councillor Johnson, do you want to just refer that to councillor Teal when she's well, or are you going to answer?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Page nine, or actually, page 10. Have you got any questions, councillor Mohammed, on page 10? No? Moving on to page 12. Councillor Clement Jones?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. On page 12, question one. Thank you councillor Teal very much for the answers and the data. It does seem a somewhat defensive answer to a simple question. My motivation for asking the question was that I'd seen this data in the LAC chairs briefing, but it was a restricted report. So really, my question to councillor Turpin is, does he support my mission to get this sort of data out into the public? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. I'm guessing we can't answer that question. Is there anybody? Oh, oh, is it councillor?
Councillor Turpin?
Oh, sorry. I'm a bit behind, I'm sorry, councillor Turpin. Are you going to answer that?
Thank you very much. Yes, Simon, you know me, always up for transparency and will be willing to do that as far as possible. Just invite you again or one of your colleagues to join the Economic Recovery Fund Steering Group, it would be wonderful to have you, and of course, you will have access to all and any information that you desire, and you will also get to steer the economic recovery of the city for your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions on page 12? Page 13? Sorry, yes, councillor Clement Jones?
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, best get the right question, where were we? Yeah, question two. Yeah, so thank you for that answer councillor, councillor Turpin, and thank you for your support in my mission to get this sort of information out there. And I think, obviously, your defensive answer was because some of this data does look a little lopsided is the issue. And I'm wondering if councillor Turpin is seriously suggesting that the reason that this is so lopsided, that there wasn't a Liberal Democrat in the room, and that they can't come to some sort of fair arrangement with things without getting a Liberal Democrat in. If that is the case, then, you know, there is an option, we could have had councillor Shaffack as leader, I'm sure on our own, we could have come up with a much fairer distribution across the city. So thank you again for that, and as I say, you know, I hope you'll support the Liberal Democrats in the next election, because I reckon we could probably do a better job. Thank you.
Not sure that was a question, but we'll move on. Page 15. Yes, okay, councillor.
Thanks, cheers, Simon. Yeah, the applications were in May, and the all councillors were given the information, and there were councillors in some wards that really went above and beyond, and I would say that councillor Mark Jones, councillor Abdi San Mohamed, really supported the communities. Councillor Christina Gilligan has been supportive of our communities. Two of the important criteria that we had in this was that this had to come from the community, and which meant that businesses had to collaborate together, and they had to come forward with their ideas. And we know, we agree, that decisions made locally are the best decisions, so they would know best, they are the experts in their local centres. So they had to collaborate, and they had to provide additionality to what already existed. Now, we can't make people go and do things, so the spread is, the spread of the projects, there's clearly, there's a lot more in the central area, because the central area contains the city centre. But if you take the city centre out of it, the spread is as even as it could be, and we've really encouraged and supported groups to come forward, but we have what we have. To have a Liberal Democrat in the room would have made it more fair and more transparent. I'm not sure that you would be better on your own, though. Cheers.
Can we stick to the question and answer it, please? Okay, we're on page 17. Have you got any further questions on page? Well, sorry, yeah.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My question number one on page 16, can I thank councillor Paul Wood for his answer, but does he not accept that irrespective of the government saying that cladding only becomes dangerous above 18 metres, that the buildings between 11 and 18 metres are also important? And where we have buildings of that height in Sheffield, we do need to know which of those have got this dangerous cladding, and which of that cladding will need to be removed in the very near future. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Someone else is answering these questions for councillor Wood? Is it councillor Wilson? Oh, sorry, waiting for a microphone. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sorry about that. Yeah, I am answering these for councillor Paul Wood, although I don't feel like I can answer that one on his behalf, but I'm sure that you can get a written answer on that.
Thank you very much. So we are running out of time, colleagues, but a lot of these pages are not, so I'm going to ask...
Sorry, Lord Mayor, I've got some more.
Okay.
So in terms of, in terms of question three, clearly very pleased that a dedicated webpage is being produced. Can I have, can I have an answer about when it's going to, when that dedicated webpage will go live?
Can I answer that, councillor Wilson?
Thank you, we'll let you know as soon as we know that as well.
Hold on to the microphone for a few minutes, you might have another question. Councillor Sangha?
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor, and so, thank you for that, that answer. I hear what the Lord Mayor's saying about time. So just in terms of, just in terms of question nine, clearly, Veolia have had five drivers leave recently, and they've not been replaced. What is the council doing to make sure we have sufficient drivers for our bin lorries in the coming months? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Again, I'm sorry that I am answering on behalf of Paul Wood because of his voice issues. I'm sure you've been aware of the strike action and how that might have delayed improvement on that, but we'll get you another written answer for that as well.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillor Sangha? Okay. As I said, we have run out of time, but it is at this point where I'd like to bring councillor Diamond in to ask a question of the joint authorities. I'm aware that you have a question, councillor Diamond. Is it to the pensions or the fire and rescue?
Yeah, it's to South Yorkshire Pensions Authority.
Thank you.
So Border to Coast is in the early stages of developing a new low-carbon fund to be launched early 2023. Such a fund is essential if South Yorkshire Pensions Authority is to deliver on its commitment to net zero carbon by 2030. The FCA and HMRC rules mean that such a fund can only be launched if there is a realistic expectation that there will be more than one investor of such a fund. Which other pension authorities with the Border to Coast pool have registered an interest in this development? Thank you.
I'm presuming that question is to councillor Wetherall. I can't see him. Oh, he's at the back, sorry councillor Wetherall.
Yeah, thanks for your question. I'm the new section 421 for South Yorkshire Pensions, so I can't answer that question. So I'm going to have to get it in writing, but just sending it to you, I'll send it to all councillors as well. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you for your question, thank you for your answer, councillors. Right, that's the end of questions. We're now going to move on to item six on the agenda, a notice of motion regarding developers' climate change declaration. There is a maximum of 25 minutes for this item. May I call upon councillor Angela Argenzio? And can I ask that councillors are going to keep to the time, because we are taking quite a lot of time getting to each other? So councillor Argenzio.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, if COP26 has told us anything, it's that the blah 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 has got to end, and that all politicians need to act in any way they can to reduce emissions. COP26 failed to deliver the reduction in carbon emissions we need. This motion on our developer climate change declaration is just one step in the right direction. It is an opportunity for us to ask those designing and building new homes and other buildings to try harder to reduce the demand for energy in buildings, and thereby also reducing running costs and carbon emissions. We are very aware that the building regulation standards in this country are weak with regards to energy efficiency. There is little incentive to install renewable technologies such as solar panels and heat pumps, and we need to do more to encourage flood prevention and promote biodiversity in new developments. Of course, it would be a lot easier if the government simply toughened building regulation, but that is not going to happen in a meaningful way any time soon. Our proposal in this notice of motion is for a climate change declaration to be submitted by developers as part of the planning process. We cannot compel developers to have a higher standard, but we can encourage them, recognise exemplary best practice, and we can also shine a light on the developers who do the bare minimum, and in turn expose those developers who build homes where the occupants will have to pay high fuel bills, and where the energy use and carbon emissions are higher than they need to be. If developers plan to build to high standards from the beginning, the additional costs are not as great. Installing solar panels during construction is cheaper than installing them after a building is built. Designing in high insulation standards is cheaper than installing expensive and disruptive external insulation after a building is constructed. This is why we need to encourage developers to up their game. This proposal adds no significant cost to developers. It is a request for information that makes clear how they are responding, or not, to the climate emergency. If developers do not respond positively to our call for higher standards, then we will have an evidence base to go to the government with, and to show them that they need to improve building regulations to ensure we build homes that are fit for the future. Lord Mayor, this proposal is a positive one, and I hope that all groups will support it.
Thank you. I now call on councillor Garbutt to second that, but can I ask that councillor Abdul Kasum, can you put your hand up so that after this, you'll be next to speak? So when this, are you, excuse me, excuse me, I'm trying to make your job easier by that councillor's going to be the next person to speak. Carry on councillor Garbutt.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I was elected in May 2019 and went straight on to the planning committee. I knew nothing about planning, but since climate change is high on my priorities, I challenged earlier when an application came through, only offering 10% of energy for end users to come from renewable energy. I was told by the chair that I couldn't raise party policy as an objection. Well, the chair was wrong, because in Sheffield, we declared a climate emergency in January 2019, and so I was merely trying to apply a council commitment. However, in conversation with planners, I learned that climate emergency notwithstanding, the department couldn't insist on more than 10% because of national policies and because of the lack of a local plan. Ever since, I've been looking for ways we could demand more from developers, and it seems there are precious few ways. So I welcome this motion, which offers more of a carrot than a stick, and for responsible developers to gain recognition for their efforts to address the climate emergency. I'm given to understand that the emerging local plan to come into effect maybe in 2024 will include much more stringent standards on both embedded carbon and final-use carbon. That's potentially another two years of Sheffield buildings built to 20th century standards and in need of complex retrofitting. It makes much more sense to build them to 21st century needs, and I'm confident developers will rise to this challenge. I commend this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. There are two proposed amendments, and these are number one and two on your list circulated at this meeting. The person to speak after Abdul is councillor Jones, can you raise your hand so they can know where you're sat? Thank you. Carry on.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, we will be supporting this motion, but we've also put forward an amendment as an addition, highlighting that tackling climate change isn't just something that the council have become interested in recently, but that Labour councillors have been leading the way for years. The fact that Sheffield has been crowned the UK's most sustainable large city validates our work. We have been steadfast in our commitment to more sustainable developments throughout the last decade, and have required that all new buildings and conversions are designed to reduce emissions of greenhouse gases, and that they play their part in response to changing climate. It's really important that the council makes the best use of solar energy, passive heating and cooling, natural light, and natural ventilation. And the energy needs of large developments in Sheffield are reduced by 10% compared to national building regulations. This is delivered through improved building performance or renewable energy. This has been successful, but clearly we should also strive to do more. It was the previous Labour administration who brought forward the climate emergency declaration and the target of becoming carbon net zero by 2030. As part of everything, needs to be looked at, and clearly, developments have a major role to play. This will be part of the new local plan, and through the 10-point Plan for Climate Action and the implementation of the ARA report, we need to see bolder steps being taken. We've made progress, but it's clear that we still need to go further. That's why we are backing this motion, Lord Mayor, with this amendment as an addition. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Can I ask Martin Smith to raise his hand, please, so the mic can come to you for your turn? Now it's councillor Jones.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We're adding to the amendment because we fully recognise that what we need to do is come together as political parties and deliver a steer clearly for government to listen to. Unfortunately, many steps have been made, but they have been reneged on. Since 2006, the decent home standards have not kept pace, they really have not. We have had over a lost decade of indecision and dithering, and what we've had from national government has been truly shocking. All they've done is blame local councils for blocking planning, so they've stripped away all our powers to insist that better planners, better builders should come to cities like ours and deliver the housing that our citizens need, to prepare our city for the future, and to give us decent homes for everybody here. We are not looking to delete the amendments of the Green motion, we fully endorse them. And what we really, really need to do is send out a clear message to every developer out there. If you are not going to build decent houses for people, if you're going to build houses purely for profit, don't come to Sheffield, go somewhere else. We want houses that will deliver the places and the homes that our citizens deserve and need. That's why we're supporting this motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Thank you, councillor Smith, but can I ask councillor Levery to raise your hand so we know where to go next? Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The intention of the Lib Dem amendment is to build on a motion that we largely agree with. Part L of the building regulations, they're the ones that cover energy efficiency, they're eight years old now, and our world has changed since then, and they do need updating. They are, however, national policies, and the council needs to play its part in the consultation process around the proposed changes, which began in January. There are also a number of national bodies that would need to be consulted before we make any changes to our local policies. The amendment also just touches base on a few concerns we've got about the legal implications or potential legal implications to any changes to the local planning process, and I understand one of my colleagues is going to be raising those later. And of course, I couldn't let the opportunity go by without pointing out, as the previous speaker has already said, that without a local plan, which is now nine years in the making, a lot of this stuff we can't enforce, so we do need to crack on with that local plan as quickly as possible. But as I said, keeping it brief, our amendment seeks to build on a notice of motion that we broadly agree with. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Now I call upon councillor Levery to second that amendment, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Whilst I do understand the drivers behind the motion, it is the statutory consultees, not the developers, who have a major influence on some of the environment issues raised. Safety dispersal of service water is a water company's remit, either to local water courses, circuators, or retention tanks. Only wastewater should go to sewer. That's why the statutory consultancy, they are notified about all planning applications, not so the Environment Agency. Their remit is so limited that they only receive planning applications for land in floodplains or major housing developments with no access to the sewer system. It's not enough. Two examples of why there needs to be a significant increase in the involvement of the Environment Agency in the planning process. First of all, there are many instances in this city of developments which have diverted the natural flow of watercourses, leading to flooding of roads, land, and property. Residents having to put permanent pumping in cellars with no recourse, that is not a planning requirement. It should be. Secondly, small housing developments in environmentally sensitive locations and no access to sewer network. Although treatment plants are installed, there is still a discharge of effluent into the local environment. It should be licensed by the Environment Agency. We have witnessed in this city the devastating impact of flooding, as has Leeds and on many occasions... as has Leeds and on many occasions Calder Valley. The Environment Agency's input to our local plan should ensure that there's no increase in flooding risk and our local nature reserves and ecologically sensitive sites are protected. We believe our amendment moves the emphasis away from developers and onto statutory consultees who, after all, are tasked with the responsibility of ensuring their areas of environmental expertise produce the right outcome on planning applications.
Thank you, councillor. Can you pass your microphone to councillor Marouf in front of you, please? He's the next person to speak. And the next person after that is councillor Lodge. We now move to the debate on the matter. I would like... I think I've only got those two speakers, so councillor Marouf.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wasn't actually going to speak on this motion at all, but I feel compelled to put forward a suggestion. So I have no speech prepared, but just what I... It's a suggestion from myself. Basically, one of the largest land disposers in the city is Sheffield City Council. And as such, if we were to implement some of the ideas that all parties have put forward into the terms of sale for these pieces of land, then some of this could actually be done. And not only would we be setting the precedence to say to other people, "Look, we are doing it ourselves by disposing of land only to developers who will give us these sort of outputs." And therefore, we can stand up high and say, "Look, we are doing this and we want other people to do exactly the same." And I know what the question's going to be coming on from that is, can we actually legally do it? And I would say yes, because I think it needs a little bit more investigation. But under section 123 of the Local Government Act 1972, there is provision there if the local authority does promote something which it believes will improve the environment of the city, then it can do so and do it at less than best consideration. And equally, I think what I'm suggesting also applies to the fact that we can contribute to affordable housing as well and housing for the social sector. So this wasn't anything to do with what people have been saying, but this is a pure suggestion that I think everybody should take on board and let's be on the front here rather than following other people. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Lodge?
It's the first time I've had a round of applause when I stood up. Thank you, Lord Mayor. This... Sheffield has a proud history of being at the forefront of a lot of things around environmental issues. Back in the 70s, we were there for Clean Air and we brought this in. And we've done a lot of things in the past, looking at, you know, the innovative district heating system that operates there, that heats the buildings throughout the city centre, that heats the hospitals and I think probably includes some of the buildings around where we are here, the university. And it shouldn't be that it's an option for any development that goes on the city centre to hook up to the district heating. It should be considered as... They've got to justify why they're not hooking up to things like that. There's a district heating system that's out in Holbrook that was brought online there from a private individual that goes through. And we should be looking at more of these and trying to link these things through and providing sustainable energy that's out there for people, for using the facilities that are there. We've done a number of things in Sheffield with sustainable urban drainage. On the Manor Estates, where the development's going on there, there's SUDS that's down there to do it through. If you go to the Parkway Fire Station, that's been included there, sustainable urban drainage around the development there. But we need to do more. As has been mentioned, the runoff of water for a number of people that are making hard standing on their front gardens. You know, the water has to go somewhere. And in Burley Ward, we've experienced a number of problems with residents round about where water is running down the hills and gathering and going into their drive. So it is something we need to do. It's something we need to tackle. And for colleagues who've been on from the council for a number of years, will remember Alf Mead. And at the risk of becoming Alf's apprentice here, Alf came... Bit of a worrying thing to state, actually. But Alf used to come up with a lot of things and a lot of suggestions that perhaps now we're looking and thinking, "You know what? We probably should have done a little bit more around there." And I think there are great opportunities in Sheffield. I'll keep banging on about it. We've got rivers that are here. We've got hills. We should be using the natural elements to generate more sustainable energy across the city. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Otten, you've got your own microphone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think that we're in danger of reaching a fair amount of agreement across the room on this issue. I think we're all fairly close to each other. And I thought I ought to speak, though, to explain why we want to delete clause G from the motion. We've put down an alternative. Because we're in danger of... Planning policy is its own strange little world, isn't it? It's a quasi judicial process. And you have to, if you want to achieve good things out of it, you've got to go about them in the right way and make it work. And the danger is if you try and bolt on something to the planning system, you create extra work for planning officers, which I'm not sure whether they can do that and whether that's going to be funded. But then you get them to do all this work and then you... But that's not strictly relevant under planning policy. It's not supported by policies in the local plan. And if you do that, the danger is that if you refuse an application, developers will come and say, "Well, you didn't refuse it because of stuff in your plan, which you're allowed to do. You refused it because you didn't like our answers to the questions on your survey." Well, if they do that and if they win at appeal, then this policy that's attempting to get something extra above and beyond what the planning policy demands in terms of sustainability is actually going to deliver less. It's going to do more harm than good. So I know I've said legal advice. Legal advice is not whether it's unlawful to do this, but whether it's actually the best way kind of legally to achieve what you want to achieve, I suppose, is the sort of advice I think the council should take before doing this. We've not deleted the following clauses, which also talk about this declaration, because we're not saying we shouldn't do it. But I think it's something to be kind of wargamed to see what the outcomes will be before pressing ahead with it. So I just thought I ought to explain why we're deleting that clause. I think we're agreed on what we want to try and achieve, but I think you've got to be very careful messing about the planning system. The way to get the right things out of the planning system is to adopt a local plan with the right policies in it and then apply them. It's not to try and add little bits on outside the system because I think that's got risks. So that's all I wanted to say. But otherwise, you know, we're all very keen to... We've got an agreement on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Turpin?
Thank you. I don't want to spend a lot of time speaking, but just to thank the Lib Dems and Labour for backing this and for also, you know, adding to it. It is such a mammoth task to take on that we won't succeed unless we all do it together. And I just wanted to add that, you know, there is a big developer in Sheffield that is the council itself. And I would really like to see the commitment to do these things from the council with the buildings that we build ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now go... I haven't got anyone else on my list. Is it Brian Homshaw? Yeah. I haven't got anyone on this. Does anybody else want to speak after this? Because I haven't seen anybody else put their hand up. No? Okay. Carry on.
Just very briefly, I am on planning committee. I do see what goes off and what doesn't go off equally. Just responding to Joe there. Joe, that's why we have supplementary planning documents. And we ought to be having more of those, working with planners so they're not overwhelmed, to get some really good supplementary planning documents out. Thank you.
Thank you. Very useful. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number one. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Oh, yes. Yes. I'm sorry.
Thank you, everybody, for your contributions to the debate and I'm glad that it seems that we are broadly in agreement. I urge all members to support the motion, which gives us a real opportunity to hold... To both hold the developers to account but also to recognise those who make a real effort to address the climate emergency. I think it is both a carrot and a stick. The amendment from the Lib Dems, I've got to say, was disappointing because despite what councillor Smith said, it is actually an attempt to derail a positive workable policy. I think the Lib Dems should step out of opposition mode for a change and just try to be positive about addressing the climate crisis. And they might just be able to see that. People have had enough of blah, blah, blah and their amendment proposes precisely that. So thank you for supporting this motion.
I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number one. Move my...
Please, could I vote in parts on amendment one? So in abstaining on the amendment, I'll be voting for M and P.
Councillor Otten?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for this amendment, we're abstaining on L for Lima.
Thank you.
Lord Mayor? Whoa, that's loud. In voting for this motion, we're also abstaining on L for Lima.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favour of amendment one, please raise your hand. Any against? Any abstentions? Thank you. That's carried. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment two. Councillor Martin Smith's amendment. Are we going to vote in parts or as a whole? As a whole? Wow, that must be a first. Okay. All those in favour of amendment two, please raise your hands. All those against? Any abstentions? That's now lost. I'm now going to move to the vote on the substantive motion. Are members going to vote on the motion as a whole or in parts? Councillor Otten?
Lord Mayor, in voting for, we are abstaining on the L as before and we're against G.
Councillor Chin Chen?
Lord Mayor, in voting for, I'll be against A, B and abstaining on J. And the same for the amendments as well.
Okay, thank you. All those in favour of the substantive motion, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those... Any against? Any abstentions? That's carried. We now move to item seven on the agenda. Notice of motion regarding White Ribbon Day and ending male violence against women. There's a maximum time of this for 25 minutes. May I call upon councillor Ben Curran to move the motion? You may speak for up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Can I just ask, Ben? Can Gary Wetherall please stand by? If you put your hand up, they can give you a microphone. Carry on councillor Curran.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There are too many people who feel that tackling violence against women and girls is a women's issue. It's not. It's a men's issue. Men commit the vast majority of the violence against women and men commit the vast majority of violence within our society. And that's why I'm pleased to be bringing this motion today and I'm pleased that Gary Wetherall is seconding it. And I'm pleased, actually, in a number of my male Labour colleagues who also wanted to second it. A lot of them came forward. So I want to talk a bit about why I'm moving this motion. I'm moving this motion for my constituent and the many like her who was inappropriately touched on a bus by a man. She spoke out sternly, but the response from the driver was to roll his eyes as if to say, and this is in her words, "We've got a right one here. That's not good enough and our culture needs to change." I'm moving this motion for my nephew's former classmates and the many like them. Three or four girls from his form that graduated just last... Before the summer have been spiked in this sort of new perverse male injecting a woman with some sort of substance, usually in a nightclub phenomenon that's going on. It's just wrong. We need to raise the profile of this and do more. This motion's for the women who installed our Body Our Streets artwork on the Ponderosa and the many like them who feel the need to campaign for their rights. We stand with you and not with the man who burnt it down. And this is especially for the woman who raised a stake in the ashes to say, "This won't stop us." It certainly shouldn't stop you. It should embolden all of us. And this is the motion for all the women and girls in our city who should be safe just to be themselves. And it's also for the men in our city who feel that they lack the courage sometimes to speak out and do what is right in the face of sometimes a laddish culture that sort of enables this behaviour. This motion really seeks to do three things today. To recognise White Ribbon Day on the 25th of November and in future years. But also recognises that doing something once a year isn't enough. So it requests the council to seek accreditation with the White Ribbon Campaign. And it recognises also that communities are really at the frontline of this. So asks our lacks to take action as well. So, Lord Mayor, this motion alone won't make women and girls safe across our city, but it's a good starting point for me that can lead to real action and hopefully can encourage more men to stand up and speak out against it. I move this motion to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Curran. Councillor Mercer, can you just raise your hand so that they can give you the speaker for when it's your turn to speak? But we now have councillor Wetherall. You may second this motion, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm sorry to be here with this motion today, really, to second it because, you know, this should have been stamped out years and years ago. We shouldn't be here today, still going on about the same thing. Thousands of girls and women, young women, old women, grandmas, grandmas, mums and... are just getting abused by men and we've got to stop it. And it's just... The White Ribbon Day is every day. And I, as a chair of the North East, like, I've instructed my officers to put this out in our monthly Facebook and Twitter accounts we've got. And right across the offices, I know, I'm sure I'm open door with councillor Fox and councillor Grokow, is... We've got to have this. And it's just, like I say, it's a shame where we are today. So I'm asking all of us to get behind this motion and get it out in our world, wherever we go to, to all the clubs and community associations we go to. And I'm just going to tell you a bit of a personal thing. What happened to me a few years ago where a very close person I know... Somebody phoned me at two o'clock in the morning and it was from this person's phone. And she's on the floor, he says, this chap, "You're just going out on a first date with a... With this young lady." And he says, "Gary, is it?" I says, "Yes, mate." He says, "Why have you got my friend's phone?" He says, "You'd better come down Hillsborough quickly. She's not very well. I've called an ambulance." And anyway, I shot straight down. I got there at the same time as ambulance. She didn't want to go to hospital, but she's in a bad way. She's in a bad way. I couldn't recognise it. Her face was black and blue. She was bleeding all over. And it's... How sad. I've had a few goes at this chap in the past, you know, to stop him from hurting this young lady. And this time, and she got two young children. I took her to the police station and I just said, "We need to book her in and it's domestic abuse and it's appalling. We need to stop it." And she made a statement and she rang me up at four o'clock. My wife went down and stayed with her. And she rang me up at four and she says, "Gary, you've got to stop. The police coming. They come in every half an hour. And they're going to come for this chap, but they won't stop. Once you've reported it, they will not stop looking for him." And he rang me up at five o'clock and he says, "What have you done to me? What have you done?" I says, "I haven't done anything to you yet." I says, "What you've done is appalling, absolutely wicked. If you think you can just do that, sit on her, beat her from left to right with your fist, you're a bodybuilder. You weigh about 16 stone. She's about 9 stone. Bet through." He says, "Stop them coming to my house or you've had it." I said, "That's fine. You know where they pop up." He went down to the police station, made a full statement. So it's happening to all of us. It's in... It's so shocking, and it's not in the public eye. I went to a conference last year, or might have been the year before, where this person's giving this demonstration, just calling it DV. And I say, "No, do call it. You know, call it what it is. It's domestic violence. It's violence against women. You've got to say that everywhere you go to, don't just give her, you know, two letters and leave it at that." Anyway, I've rambled enough, Lord Mayor, so I'd better sit down for a fallout.
Thank you for that councillor Wetherall. Very heartfelt. councillor Merceru, you can speak up to two minutes on Amendment Number Three.
Thank you. I agree, the council must do everything it can to end male violence against women, and yes, to supporting the White Ribbon Campaign. But we must do more. As a council, we must take action on the things that we have power over. We have the power to change our licensing policy, to say we will no longer allow sexual entertainment venues in our city. We do this because we support women, our rights, our dignity, our freedom and our safety. It's simply not possible to separate the objectification of women from male violence. Research has consistently shown that men being exposed to objectifying material and messages about women is a significant predictor of aggressive behaviour towards us. When a woman is reduced to a thing, an object, a potential source of gratification, she's diminished as a human being. Sexual entertainment venues perpetuate the highly sexualised view of women that's pervasive in wider society. They're completely explicit and unapologetic about that view, and we shouldn't be complicit in providing them with that legitimacy. The venues themselves and the areas around them are frequently no-go areas for many women who have experienced or may be fearful about being approached, subjected to verbal abuse, unwanted advances or an attack. We may feel very threatened and intimidated. So I urge all members to support this amendment and truly stand up for women in our city.
Thank you. councillor Turpin, to second this amendment, please.
Thank you. I'm sure Alison Till will be gutted to meet this. She did put a lot of work into the amendment, and it's something that's very important, as it is to us all. Violence doesn't have to be physical. Violence can take many forms. Misogyny is rife in our society, and it needs, when we see it, we need to call it and we need to stop it. We're all responsible. It is men that are the problem. I'm thinking about a meeting last night that I couldn't attend in my community, and there was a woman, one of our members, attended on our behalf and took a message. And because she was in the Green Party, there was two older men, and I won't say which party because I'm not going to politicise it, but they were members of a party. And they didn't like what they heard, and they both aggressively verbally attacked her. And it's out of order. I don't really know where else to go with this. I feel like if I start talking too much, it's going to become rather twee. All I will say regarding the amendment is that Alison has been on this already, which is why we've suggested replacing one of the parts. And that the only obstacle to becoming accredited is that the council must change its licensing policy to ban sexual entertainment venues. Sheffield doesn't currently have any, so it doesn't seem like a great step to ban them. And I hope that you will support our amendment in full.
Thank you councillor Turpin. We now move to the debate on this matter. And may I remind members that I will call the name of the next person out so that the moving mic can be in the right place. So I've now got councillor Baker, and then it's councillor Lindus Hammond. Your mic's not switched on, I don't think.
It's on now.
Is it on?
It's on now. Can you hear me then? Can you hear me, mother?
Yeah.
Well, actually, saying that is why I'm up on my feet. Can you hear me, mother? I speak in support of this notice of motion and how it has directly affected my lives and other lives. I am a mother, a grandmother, and now a great-grandmother. My daughters, growing up, if they went out, they would ring us and tell us they were on their way home, and we would go and meet them. As they got older and they had their own homes, if they went out to an event, they would ring us and talk to us on their mobile phones whilst they walked home. My eldest daughter is 47, and only last year, when her family weren't at home, she was coming back from a late meeting in London, she rang me up as soon as she got off the train, and she started talking to me. And she didn't finish talking to me until she was in her home and the door was closed. Both my daughters did that. And what is upsetting me is now my granddaughters are doing exactly the same. If they are walking home alone, they ring their mothers, or their fathers, or they ring us, and they talk to us till they get home. I do not want that to happen with my great-granddaughters. And I have two beautiful great-granddaughters, and I don't want them to fear walking home alone. I particularly support this movement as they elect to work with young men and boys. They look where the problem is, and they go to the seat of the wound. Notice of motions like this that come straight to the point and want to support and bring this thing to light. So people are aware of it. I support that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you for that. Can councillor Thornton stand by, please? councillor Lindus Hammond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm going to be very brief because there's so many people wanting to speak today, and I don't want to abridge their time. I think this is really, really important. And I would just like to say that whatever happens today in terms of the Right Wing Campaign, it's really, really key that next Thursday, a week today, this council's members can do mark the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women because by just taking that small stand, we can bring some light to the stories and the experiences that we've heard about today. And I know the councils are doing some really good things. You know, I've recorded a short video. Anyone else can do that and work with us do that. I think the more of us that can speak out, the better. Just the one thing I would say, just to add to what Bill has said, is that I really do believe that this is about patriarchy. It is about the power that in that society for so long has put in men's hands over women. I can't say that every experience people have here relates directly to that, but until we can create a society which is truly equal, I do not believe we can hope to end this awful scourge. And I don't want to quote too much from fiction, but I am always struck by Margaret Atwood's quote, "Women are afraid that..." No, apologies. "Men are afraid that women will laugh at them. Women are afraid that men will kill them." Thank you.
councillor Dunya, will you stand by, please? councillor Thornton to speak.
I just wanted to quickly thank Gary for such a great speech earlier. Apart of, whilst we've been having, you know, huge headlines in the media and press about horrible tragedies such as Sabina Nessa and Sarah Everard, I was really fortunate to be at the Sabina Nessa vigil and talking to residents of the city about, and wanting them to bring their ideas to us about what, you know, they know their local area's best. How can we make it safer for them? And I hope that part of that is, you know, an outreach procedure is something that we can be doing better as a council. And I believe that this motion largely does that. But I do have to raise questions around the Green Amendment on basis of that outreach issue in that I know many sex workers across the country. I'm fortunate to be friends with so many people who, they are proud of what they do, and they have the right to do that with their own body, just as we have the right to do that, do anything we want in our own jobs, so long as we're doing it safely and legally. I've been in a position where I've researched sex work across, you know, different models as to how it has worked across the globe. And some of the best models are, for example, like that in New Zealand, where people are properly registered. The sex workers have great relationships with their local councils and their police. And I do believe that if we are going to outright ban sexual entertainment venues in the city, we are not going to build that outreach and that procedure as, you know, as we want to. Now, how many people in this room have had conversations with sex workers? How many of you actually asked them these questions? Because we cannot just turn around and say morally, what we think you are doing is wrong. We think that this is wrong, and so we are going to ban it. That only pushes sex workers further underground and further away from the, you know, the reaches of the council and the police to be able to keep them safe. Whilst we judge people for the work that they do, we cannot keep them safe. So I cannot support the Green Amendment today, but I do think that this motion is largely good. And I hope that we can continue to reach out to people and make this a better city for women and non-binary people. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Thornton. councillor Jane Dunn.
Is this working?
Yes.
I wasn't planning on speaking today because this is deeply personal to me. I grew up in a household with domestic violence. My mum was beaten half to death numerous times, and I hid underneath the bed with my sister. Unfortunately, this is still happening today, and women are still scared, and women are still frightened. And we just can't let that continue. We just can't. I've always felt deeply ashamed that I was frightened of men for many, many years. And I have had my drinks spiked. And luckily, a very good male friend of mine found me, and this is the first time I have ever told anybody. And I woke up the next day, and I couldn't remember anything. I was throwing up violently sick. And it's really, really, I have never even told my mum, but she'll hear this today. Because I think we have to speak out now, because it's everywhere. And we have to make sure that every employer, everywhere we go, that we talk about this. Because we're only going to change everything if we get men to change. Because not all men are bad. I have been supported and loved and cared for by some amazing men. And I'm not a man-hater like my dad told me I was. I'm not. I absolutely adore them. I just can't trust.
Well, thank you councillor Dunn. That was heartfelt. councillor Shafak Mohammed. And everybody else on my list got my, have got the microphone, so councillor Shafak.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Particularly councillor Curran for bringing this notice of motion here to debate. It's really moving to hear the personal stories. And I think it's important that we as city councils send a clear message because men are the problem. Because 99% of gender-based violence is perpetrated by men towards women. And clearly, the killing of Sarah Everard has shocked the nation and clearly jolted us all to kind of look at what sort of society we're in. And I clearly want to, you know, challenge what's happening out there. You know, more than 600,000 women are sexually assaulted each year, but only one in six report it to the police. So we need to encourage more reporting to the police. More than 50,000 women are reported being raped, but only 1,400 rapists are convicted. So we've got a lot of work to do. And clearly, we've got to also look at national government and call upon them to actually address some of this. So I would like, and I hope that everyone here will support the call to make misogynist hate crime treated as seriously as racially motivated crime or racially hatred. And therefore, what I want to do is that, we want the government to kind of pass a domestic abuse bill. And clearly, what we also want the government to do is something called Istanbul Convention. If colleagues have not heard of it, I suggest you look into it. It's a really important thing that happened a while back, about 10 years ago. And I know it's the Council of Europe, and some people might not like that. But actually, look into what that convention is about. I, you know, had the pleasure of actually being part of the Gender Equality and Women's Rights Committee in the European Parliament. And actually, the Istanbul Convention, and next week, has always been a major event in the European Parliament. And I think we've got to send a clear message here for the city. And I'm suggesting to councillor Fox and to councillor Johnson that maybe we can send a message as a city council that we agree in principle to the Istanbul Convention and urge the government to actually ratify it and start to actually do it. Because a lot of other countries, around 45 countries, have actually ratified it and actually are signed up to it. And why ain't the United Kingdom doing it as we are a leading kind of power in the world? We should send a clear signal, not just to the people in the United Kingdom, but across the world, that gender-based violence is not acceptable. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor. I'm sorry there are people still on the list, but we have run out of time. And I'm conscious I want councillor Curran to have the right of reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, colleagues, for the sort of tone of the debate and the many personal stories within it. Jane, I can only really say sorry. No one should ever have to put up with that. And I'm deeply sorry that you did. As someone who grew up in Canada, I don't get to reference my early political heroes very often, but one of them feels like they deserve a mention today, and that's Jack Leighton. The 6th of December 1989 was a tragic day in Canadian history. An anti-feminist gunman carried out a mass shooting in Le Colle Polytechnique in Montreal, where he targeted women getting degrees in engineering, literally separating in the room the men from the women, before he started to shoot them in what he called his fight against feminism. Fourteen women were murdered, ten were injured, and four men who were trying to help them injured in the process. It was truly a tragedy. Jack Leighton, at that point, was a councillor in Toronto, and with a group of other men, set up the White Ribbon Campaign, which has grown internationally into some of the solutions that we're talking about here today. So whilst events like those that took place at Le Colle Polytechnique are thankfully not common, sadly, everyday violence against women is, as I've shown in my opening remarks, and many others have, much more personally. And so we do need to do more. And just to quote Jack Leighton, he said, speaking directly to men at the time, "We have both the role and responsibility in working to end violence against women." That we need to stop, step up our efforts in promoting gender equality and be accountable to challenging the most harmful aspects of masculinity. Sadly, this is probably more true even than it was then when he spoke those words in 1991. So yeah, just thank you, colleagues, for a good debate. And hopefully, this goes forward, as you've all indicated, and we can start to make a difference.
Thank you councillor Curran, and thank you for bringing this to council. And thank you to everyone who spoke today. That's been an amazing debate. I'm now going to move to the vote on this amendment by councillor Merceru. Can you tell me, please, are we voting in parts or as a whole?
I don't think, is it on? I can shout.
All those, wow, sorry. All those in favour of Amendment Number Three, please raise your hands. Thank you. Or any against? Thank you. Any abstentions? Thank you. That is lost. Okay, thank you councillor. We've got a lot to get through without being interrupted. Now, we're going to move to the vote on the substantive motion. Is there any voting in parts? All those in favour? Any dare to be against? Thank you. That's carried. I think it's appropriate to have a 10-minute break, colleagues. Try not to be too late. And when you see me, hover back into the room. If you'd take your seats, that would be even better. Thank you. Thank you.
Where can we go? Move this chair.[594.16]
Decision-making powers. We need all the council structures to get behind local area working, provide solutions, not obstacles. As for the two amendments, the Labour one basically says March 2020 was some sort of year zero and the door was going well. The surprise to me was the Green amendment. It's all right talking to 152 neighbourhoods, but where will decisions be taken? I fear that the Greens have shown their true colours. Top-down, centralising, nothing can be devolved. Lord Mayor, area working is critical to how this council moves forward. Only by being big and bold in how many responsibilities we devolve can we deliver a modern, enabling council that is close to local communities and empowers individuals to improve their lives and those of their neighbours. I move the motion.
Thank you. May I call upon councillor Simon Clement-Jones to second this motion, please? You have up to two minutes.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And also I'd like to thank Terry for his answer to, sorry, councillor Fox, for his answer to councillor Slack, which I think hopefully goes a bit of a way towards explaining the role of the LACs to people, which is, as my job as one of the chairs, is one of the hardest things I find, as I seem to talk in code a lot of the time. But I'd say, I think, I hope we need to find a way of explaining exactly what the LACs are better to people. Obviously, I'm not the right person for that, but I'd like to thank Terry for his go at it. I think in terms of where we've got to today, to this point, I'm very heartened for the progress that we have made. I mean, obviously as Chair, I've seen the work that the officers have done and the work that my fellow LAC chairs are putting in to make this a success. And I genuinely do want to make this an absolute success. I believe wholeheartedly in this working. As I say, I certainly give the officers an A so far for the efforts they've put in. All the officers I've talked to have seemed to be starting to get what it is. Obviously, delivery is another thing. I'd probably give the politicians a C+, so well done so far, but could do better. And I think that is exemplified by the amendments to this, in that in the Labour amendments, they're saying that, you know, we've done this delegation. And I think, we did talk about the delegation at the LAC chairs meeting, but we definitely wanted to just go further. And the point we made at that time was, was actually, we're making this decision in January, we're going to come together and do these delegations. Let's get them done there. Let's not have this convoluted process. Let's get it in from the very beginning. And I think also, I'd like to say about the Green motion, some of it talks about machinery and management. That's not what LACs are all about. That's not what anything's about. It's about people, it's about places. And so, you know, the management of machinery is up to managers. And we should be about policy and talking to people and listening to people, finding out what they want. So, thank you all very much indeed. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. There are two proposed amendments, and these are number four and five on your list circulated at this meeting. May I call upon councillor Mary Lee to move amendment number four? You can speak for up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Our local area committees are now up and running. The chairs have been meeting for several months, and we have had our first public meetings. Community plans are being developed, informed by a record number of surveys completed digitally and in paper form. The chairs are organising briefings for their members. And in the East, just for an example, we've had discussions with various heads of service from youth services, environmental services and community safety. Last week, just to reply to what Andrew has said, last week myself and councillor Anne Murphy met with around 20 officers from across the council. And we wanted to talk to them about environmental issues within our LAC area, to get their views and to put our own views forward and to tell them what people on the ground tell us. We came to an agreement about what we can do to address some of these problems in the first instance, looking at prevention and mapping. And there was a great enthusiasm there for working together for all those different officers from parks and housing, waste management, et cetera. So I was really pleased about that. And this morning, I met with officers from our business support service to look at sending, setting up a local business forum in our LAC area. And we planned to run a pilot, that was the initial thought. I've not discussed that yet with our LAC members, but that's what we intend to do. Our LACs are opening up many opportunities for us to meet the needs of our communities. And there is a great willingness from all to work together. We need to grasp this and run with it. And we need to ensure that we meet the needs and aspiration of all our communities, especially where we know voices are seldom heard. Whilst there are some similarities with community assemblies, assemblies did not really deliver for local people, and the Lib Dems administration did not devolve powers down, for whatever reason. And what budgets were allocated, in my area, they were reduced, and they went to support a local plan. But we know we have a delegation process in place now, which the LAC chairs supported on Tuesday. This was to enable us to take proposals for devolve decisions coming from the bottom up and from the top down. And this should always start with local people, hearing what they have to say, devolving power where necessary or enabling services to work better if that delivers for what local people need. Sorry. But just lastly, I just want to say, and this is by no means least, we need to ensure that inequality that is plain to see in our city is addressed. The LACs can play their part in this. And if we don't use the LACs to level up, we will all fail and we will face the consequences in this city.
Thank you. There are two proposed amendments, and these are number four and five. I've said that, sorry. And I'll call upon councillor Belbin to second this amendment. Please be kind, this is a maiden speech. I'm sorry, councillor Belbin, I can only just see you.
Hello. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just to explain why I wanted to speak particularly on this amendment to this motion, because I actually quite like the original motion in lots of ways. I personally agree with the idea of devolving budgets and decisions being made more locally. However, this isn't about what I want and what I like, because I've already got a voice in this chamber, as do all the other councillors here in the room. And the whole point of local area committees is not to give more powers to councillors, it's to empower our communities. So for me, the focus of the LACs in these early stages has got to be about building that partnership with our communities. So it shouldn't all be about where the money and the resources sit. The basis of a good partnership isn't transactional relationships. It's about listening, it's about developing trust and building good communications. We've not even had the results of that LAC survey yet, and we've only had one, our first public meetings across the seven areas. So for me, it's jumping the gun to be dictating now how the money and the resources are going to be managed. It's a bit like producing the prenup when you've only just been on the first date. So that's not the way to develop a healthy partnership. All it does do is focus people on who's going to get what and how we're going to divvy up the cake, instead of building trust and trying to develop that sense of common purpose. So I feel right now we should be concentrating on reaching out and engaging, and especially with those who might not usually be heard, because they don't shout the loudest. I think we've got to be careful not to put people off by using lots of technical or academic jargon when we talk about engagement. We can just talk about having a chat or having a conversation with people. And I think we've not got to make assumptions about what the outcomes of the engagement's going to be, or assume that outcomes are going to be the same in one area as they're going to be in the next. So if someone tells you that their local park is the most important thing in the area to them, it doesn't necessarily mean they want it to be managed locally. I've worked with lots of friends' groups who, you know, of course, they want to be involved, they want to be a partner, they want to be listened to, but they don't necessarily want to manage the budget or make all the decisions about their local park. What they do want is a conversation about what their neighbourhood should look like. They want honesty and transparency about what we're working with, the budgetary constraints, the possibilities as well. They want to understand how community groups can meaningfully contribute and how different services might be able to work together more effectively. And of course, I think people do understand there's a citywide context to this. So in the North East, we met with our LAC officers and with officers yesterday, we looked at all the fly-tipping hotspots around the city. And there's no getting away from the fact that it's worse in some parts of the city than in others. And that the same goes for the state of our parks, youth services, housing, whatever you care to mention, all the elements talked about in the original motion. So of course we need to act local, but we also need to be conscious of the bigger picture. And I don't think we should be dictating now what should be managed centrally or locally. So I'm urging members to put aside the horse trading, put aside the transactional approaches, and instead support this Labour amendment to remind ourselves that the LACs should be about building a closer relationship between this big institution called the council and the residents within our communities, so that together we can develop and realise a vision of the neighbourhoods and the city that we want to live in.
Thank you, councillor, and congratulations on your maiden speech. I now call upon councillor Garbutt to move amendment number five. You can speak up to two minutes. And then after councillor Garbutt, it will be councillor Gilligan. So, thank you. Carry on.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations, councillor Belbin. I was puzzled when in February 2020, the announcement of the LACs was made. I am a great believer in democracy. And the more voices we take into account when making decisions, the more complete a picture we get, and theoretically, the better the decisions will be. But I couldn't see how dividing a city of over half a million into just seven parts of about 80,000 people each could begin to engage any more people than full council already does. And I feared that they, the LACs, would be prone to the same party infighting so hated by Sheffield citizens. I'm encouraged to hear that some LACs have made a really positive start, but my experience to date has only served to confirm my fears. In my opinion, there's little chance of reaching the voices we really need to hear, which are those that are seldom heard. I therefore feel it's premature to seek to boost their powers before the governance committee has reviewed what's going on here, what the LACs are about and how they're working. We've already spoken about the lack of democracy that, well, I feel that has been one of the features of the LACs. Now, I'm deeply committed to engaging Sheffield citizens in the political life of the city, and that's all of Sheffield citizens, as many as we can get on board. Our amendment makes it clear, this motion falls well short of achieving that. And I commend it to fellow members. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shaw, can you stand by? Put your hand up so they know where the microphone needs to go. Councillor Gilligan.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And congratulations, councillor Belbin. In fact, I don't have an awful lot to say, because I think you said everything I wanted to say. But in principle, I support the idea of local democracy and the idea that decisions should be taken at the lowest practicable level, and that local communities and individuals should feel empowered and should be encouraged to engage in the decision-making process. I also support the idea that we need to be innovative and creative in the ways we engage with local communities. However, if we look at what's happening in the council at the moment, we are all working really hard to develop a way of improving our decision-making and making it more transparent and accountable. This is the committee system. This was a democratic decision taken by the local people of Sheffield. And as we move forward to develop this committee system, we also have to work out how the LACs are going to work effectively with this new system. So for that reason, I think it's premature to be deciding to make more financial decision-making with the LACs at this present time. Most LACs have only met once. These are new ways of working. Are we sure that they are truly representative of their local communities? Are we still really hearing the voices of all our local residents? We haven't drawn up local area plans yet. Let's wait a little bit and see what the residents think about the LACs. It's vitally important that LACs are truly representative of the areas that they are in, and we don't want them to become just a mouthpiece for certain dominant groups or individuals. I remember when I was a trustee of a PCT health board many years ago, it was too easy to only hear the loudest voices. So I think as councillors, we all need to come together and work cooperatively to make sure all Sheffielders feel they have a voice and can be heard on these LACs. Then, and only then, can we be confident that the decisions taken at a local level will be truly representative.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Shaw and councillor Hooper, can you stand by, please?
It's not switched on. Oh, there we go. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm speaking in support of our original motion, as many fellow members will be around, because I go on about it quite a lot. I'm passionate about devolution, both, you know, within a national context and locally. We heard earlier talk about how, like with regards to planning, like the government needs to trust, like, local authorities more with regards to planning and powers. And I think this council needs to trust local members and communities. I fully believe in devolving decisions and budgets as much as possible, so long as it's a) legal and b) practical. Housing, public health and highways are just some of the areas within the council where devolving certain budgets and decisions could benefit local communities and allow elected members and communities to work together to set, you know, priorities for their areas. I'm concerned of possibility about this council being too prescriptive about what certain budgets can be spent on with no regard to those local priorities. You know, LACs will evolve over time, and, you know, we need to allow them that room to grow. So on that, I'd just like to say this council needs to fully commit to local devolution, to trust local members and trust our communities. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Hooper and then councillor Richards.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations, councillor Belbin, on your maiden speech. Thank you. I believe in empowering communities and local people, and I have done during my service as a city councillor and parish councillor over the last few years. As the current Chair of the North Local Area Committee and previous Chair of the North Community Assembly and its predecessor, the North Panel, I am both proud and honoured to help our local residents have their say in local decision-making. In the North, we have had for well over 100 years two parish councils and Stockbridge Town Council, local democracy at its lowest level. LACs are at an early stage, and since last May, a great deal of work and many hours have been committed to making LACs successful, work undertaken by officers, LAC chairs and LAC members. Regarding an earlier comment of only four meetings a year, that's the minimum. No doubt in the North and other LACs, we were more than likely holding more meetings and additional public meetings on specific local issues. The will is there across the council to ensure LACs are a resounding success. Lord Mayor, the real commitment to LACs of this council will be made in the March 22 budget. What funds will be available next year to enable LACs to deliver their own local plans? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hooper. Councillor Richards. Can councillor Ross stand by, please? Show councillor. Yes, I think it is.
In 1997, in Wales, God's own country, we embarked on the experiment of devolution. At that time, we had a complaint immediately from Plydcombe, it didn't go far enough. And we said then, devolution is a process, not an event. And you will see, if you look at how the Welsh Assembly has progressed, it has gained more powers and it has settled into itself and is doing far more work in Wales than had been anticipated. Now, we're not even a year into local area committees yet. We've had a survey going out to our communities, to our partners, to stakeholders, to everybody we could think of under the sun. And we haven't yet analysed those and seen what our communities think of the local area committees. And we need to see what they want and ask what changes they might make before we start to say, this is what has to happen. We know that LACs are going to change, and I'm pretty sure that in 2031, when only Peter Price will still be here as a councillor, they will look very different. But that will be because we've worked together, looked at the concerns of everybody, and we've evolved and developed and got more powers, as it has appeared that they are required by our communities and by the people working with them. So that's what I think we need to do. I will support the motion. Let's embed what we have at the moment and make sure that it is secure. And as Fran said in her fabulous maiden speech, let's not demand a prenup after our first date.
Thank you. Councillor Ross, and can councillor Steve Ayres stand by, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And congratulations to councillor Belbin on her maiden speech. I actually agreed with quite a lot of it in terms of the community engagement and the need to engage with the community, which is what I think, at essence, we were all in favour of, the development of local area committees and evolving. And I actually, to a certain extent, agree with councillor Richards that it will evolve over time. I'm glad you're supporting our motion. I think you meant to say the amendment, actually councillor Richards, but never mind. I'm actually very, very surprised with the two amendments. The Greens in their speeches and in the amendment have been very timid about the community assemblies. I thought the Labour Party were the most centralising party, but looking at parts of the amendment, in the Green amendment, it's very centralising, retaining under central control. We want to devolve decision-making down as far as possible, which on the Labour amendment, I'm very surprised that they're deleting, for example, our clause A, which believes that decisions by democratic elected councillors should be taken at the lowest practical levels, so individuals and communities are empowered to influence these decisions with affect their lives. What's wrong with that? Why delete that? In your amendment, clause C, just because it's written doesn't mean it's true. What is the evidence that these committees have already gone further than previous community assemblies? Community assemblies devolve massive amounts of decision-making and finance, which is where the power lies, to the community assemblies. There is no evidence that there's any validity in that statement that's in your amendment at clause C, which is why I urge you to reject both of these amendments and support our original motion in whole, unamended. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ross. I'm sorry, there's still people on this list, but we have run out of time, and I am conscious that councillor Sangar needs to have the right of reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I think we've had a good debate, many good contributions. Clearly, I want to thank councillor Fran Belbin, and many congratulations on your maiden speech. I'm sure you're going to make many more on the council. And there was lots that you said that we can all agree with. So there is commonality. But those of us who've been, you know, on the journey of devolution, it's been a mixed journey over these past 25 years, the problem is always the natural tendency of the city council is to centralise. So the job of councillors, all parties, is to fight against that centralisation. I know people like councillor Peter Price has been one of the people who fought against it the most. And, you know, when we had community assemblies, you know, he as Chair of the North East was very innovative and very involving of the communities. So I really despair of the Greens, that in their first few months, sitting with power, their response is, we need to take more power into the centre. No, that is not what we need to do. We need to devolve it to area committees, devolve it closer to the people, trust the people. Now, the difference between the Lib Dems and Labour is clearly, you know... The difference is that you've got a process that you've started before the election. We see that this is not where we would have started, but we clearly acknowledge the huge amount of officer resource into the process. And we've got an iterative process that we can amend, adapt, and different LACs can go at different speeds. And as people have said, once we have the community plans, we will be coming back to the table, asking, different LACs will be asking for more. But the starting point has to be a belief that, belief that local communities need to be close to decision-making, we need to devolve more. And I feel that our motion says that in a better way than the Labour one. And I say the Green one, I'm afraid, just recentralises it, and we've seen where recentralising leads us, it leads us to poor decisions taken by a few councillors. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
We're now going to move to amendment, to the vote on amendment number four, moved by councillor Lee. Are members happy to vote on the amendment as a whole or in parts? Councillor Turpin, PIPs invite.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Right, sorry. So in voting for, we are voting against A and H.
Councillor Otten? No. Councillor Hurst? No. Okay. All those in favour of amendment four, please raise your hands. Thank you. Any against? Thank you. Any abstentions? That's carried, but, sorry, paragraph A and H are lost. Thank you. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number five, moved by councillor Garbutt. Are we voting in parts or as a whole?
Lord Mayor?
Just a minute, councillor Otten. Sorry, Diane.
Voting parts, please, Lord Mayor. In voting for this motion, we are voting against B, C and D.
Thank you. Councillor Otten?
We don't wish to vote in parts, Lord Mayor, but can we have a recorded vote, please?
All those in favour of recorded vote, raise your hands. Thank you. Yes, please.
Thank you. Simon Clement-Jones?
Against.
Sorry, I do apologise. The Lord Mayor, councillor Gayle Smith?
No vote.
Deputy Lord Mayor, councillor Seanad Myer Richards?
All.
Simon Clement-Jones?
Richard Shaw.
Sophie Thornton?
Bob McCam?
Chris Rosling-Josephs?
Anne Woolhouse?
Denise Fox?
Brian Lodge?
Karen McGowan?
Angela Argenzio?
Brian Homeshaw?
Calton Rivers?
Tali Pathain?
Mark Jones?
Sophia Said?
Douglas Johnson?
Ruth Mercerow?
Martin Phipps?
Tim Huggan?
Mohamed Marouf?
Ruth Milsom?
Mazak Iqbal?
Mary Lee?
Zahira Nas?
Jo Otten?
Against.
Colin Ross?
Martin Smith?
Victoria Boden?
Maya O'Rourke?
Alan Woodcock?
Roger Davison?
Barbara Masters?
Shafak Mohammed?
Fran Belbin?
Abdul Kaim?
Abtizan Mohammed?
Sue Alston?
Andrew Sangar?
Cliff Woodcraft?
Alexi Diamond?
Kate Macdonald?
Paul Turpin?
Ian Auckland?
Sue Auckland?
Steve Ayres?
Christine Gilligan?
Georgia Lindas Hammond?
Josie Pazcheck?
Terry Fox?
Anne Murphy?
Diane Hurst?
Dawn Dale?
Peter Price?
Gary Weatherall?
All.
Mike Chaplin?
All.
Tony Dams?
Jane Dunn?
Penny Baker?
Vicky Priestley?
Richard Williams?
Lewis Chin Chen?
Julie Grocut?
Francine Johnson?
Ben Curran?
Neil Gibson?
Bernard Little?
Alan Hooper?
Mike Leverie?
Anne Whitaker?
Mick Rooney?
Jackie Sateur?
And Paul Wood. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. That's carried in parts? With paragraphs B, C and D lost. And H?
E to H.
E to H is carried. Does everybody understand that? Because I'm confused, but never mind. I'm going to move now to the substantive motion. Are we voting in parts or as a whole? Yes, councillor Chin Chen?
So for the Labour amendments, in abstaining, I'll be voting for B and against C. And then for the Green amendments, in voting against, I'll be for B and F to H. And for anything remaining in the Lib Dem motion, sorry, bit of a mouthful.
Thank you. All those in favour of the substantive motion, please raise your hands. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. That's carried. You're doing very well today, ladies and gentlemen. We're now going to move to item nine on the agenda, which is a notice of motion regarding COP twenty six. Have I missed something here? Thank you. Regarding COP twenty six, now is the time for action. There is a maximum of 25 minutes, probably just. I may call upon councillor Joseph Paschke. I can't see you. Oh, oh, sorry.
Right at the back.
Yeah, thank you. You can speak up to three minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations to Fran, just as she disappears on her maiden speech. Thank you. I hope this motion is pretty much self-explanatory, so I'll just pick a few things out of it. This month, the UK hosted an event that many believe to be the world's last chance to get climate change and carbon emissions under control. I mean, whilst it didn't deliver what many of us hoped it would, we still believe that this is an ideal opportunity for us to take stock of what we're doing and to reduce carbon emissions and to build towards a more sustainable future. We believe that Sheffield has and should lead the way in fighting the climate emergency and do everything possible to work with the citizens across the city. We want to take full advantage of the hugely positive changes that a more sustainable economy would produce. Climate change should be seen as an opportunity, and that proper government investment in a decarbonised steel industry would help the future of steel in the north of England and deliver thousands of jobs in a revitalised green steel industry. Sheffield has been crowned the UK's most environmentally friendly big city by the Independent Green Cities report. Tackling the climate emergency and making the city more sustainable is not just something that has recently become important to the council, and I think Alf Mead got a name check earlier, and I'd like to support that. Under our administration since 2011, the council has taken radical and forward-thinking action to make Sheffield more sustainable, protect the environment and clean the city's air. Some of the actions are listed. Clearly, it's not an exhaustive list, and other things have been done. However, it is important to note that rather than letting waste be put into the UK landfill or sent to a landfill abroad, the Energy Recovery Facility in Sheffield generates electricity for the national grid and heat for the city's award-winning district energy network. And this takes rubbish from the black wheelie bins. This means Sheffield sends less than half a percent of waste to landfill, and that the ERF reduces greenhouse gas emissions because it avoids the need to burn fossil fuels to produce energy and generates energy for the city's schools, council-owned buildings and hundreds of homes. The Clean Air Zone will be enacted in September 22, targeting the most polluting vehicles on the roads, a historic step towards the city's cleaner air. However, before any Clean Air Zone was going to be implemented, the previous administration worked hard to secure a range of support packages for drivers of older, more polluting vehicles to assist them in upgrading their vehicles.
Your time's up, councillor.
Instead of paying a daily charge. It's just to say that while this has been great, doing this much, we clearly have much, much more to do. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I call upon councillor Murphy to second this motion, please. You can speak up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Can I just place on record, congratulations to councillor Bellbin on her maiden speech, please?
Thank you. COP twenty six has really highlighted what needs to be done to stop this disastrous climate change. Whilst there were many laudable achievements at the conference, including on reducing methane gases and reversing the appalling destruction we have seen over recent years. However, getting global heating to under 1.5 degrees is still far from assured. The climate crisis can feel overwhelming sometimes, but that doesn't mean that change can't be enacted. COP twenty six has shown that where there is a will, then incredible, important action can be agreed and delivered. But addressing the climate crisis is not just for national governments, it is for all of us to address. We can all play our part as individuals, but so too, the council, have an important role to play for Sheffield. Tackling the climate crisis isn't something that we're only just becoming to invest in. Labour councillors have been leading the way for many years. Our motion details some of our success and the fact that Sheffield has been crowned...
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Your time's up.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord. There are two proposed amendments, and these are six and seven on your list that were circulated at this meeting. Can I call upon councillor Sangar to move amendment number six? You can speak up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I still stand by my words in late 92, that the Rio Conference was mankind's last best hope for tackling climate change and the biodiversity crisis. I still stand by that, and I'm deeply, deeply disappointed with COP twenty six. 1.5 degrees C rise is barely alive. We're now talking about 2.4 to 2.7 if all the actions that have been agreed by governments across the world happen. That means not only a billion people will go without food, but hundreds of millions of people will be displaced. A level of disruption we have not seen, greater than the disruption at the end of the Second World War. That's what two and a half degrees means. That's what the world is facing with the agreements made at COP twenty six. So clearly, we need to urge governments to come back next year and make meaningful changes to actually tackle climate change so we don't suffer that. But, Lord Mayor, clearly, our amendment is talking about what we can do and the leadership of the council, and it is about engaging people and bringing people with you. And that's why we, as a group, keep talking about what individuals can do, what households can do. And recycling is not the be-all and end-all, but Sheffield should not be in the third division of recycling. Sheffield is a premiership city. It needs to be in the premiership of recycling. Food waste, the government's going to demand that we collect it. So why don't we do that early? Why don't we get ahead of the game, rather than waiting for the government to tell us? Why don't we do it now? Help people to make the changes in their lives. And then, on top of that, let the council make the changes it needs to make, and then push the government to make the changes that they need, and then the government push the other governments to make the changes. We all need to make these changes, but we, as a council, need to lead, we need to be much more active in this. We only have one planet, let's get our act together, let's keep 1.5 degrees C alive. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Spot on with time. Councillor Tim Huggan to second this amendment, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. When I saw the COP twenty six motion, sorry, getting the numbers, my first thought was, how could it be improved? How can it be more relevant to Sheffield? We need to make sure... But then, how disappointed I was to see the blah, blah, blah of the Green amendment, which is full of a laundry wishlist of uncosted projects that aren't going to do too much overall for Sheffield. The only thing they seem to want to recycle is this list of uncosted projects. Why only 12 hours for freebie? What about the early evenings or the early morning commuters that we need to get out of their cars? That said, there's some of its more idiosyncratic moments in it. Fruit, anyone? The Lib Dem amendment has embedded in it what many ordinary Sheffewares want but also desire. They want to do their bit on climate change. Up our recycling rate. Plastic waste, recycle more. Food waste collection now, not wait to be forced by a Conservative government. Let's virtual signal less and do more. Let's get carbon-neutral bin lorries that work. Let's get Sheffield back on track to meet its climate targets. Support the Lib Dem amendment. Thank you.
I call upon councillor Phipps to move the amendment number seven. You can speak up to two minutes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations on your first speech, councillor Bellbin, even though you're not here anymore. But the United... So I just wanted to come back to where we're at with COP, because it is COP twenty six. So the United Nations Climate Change Conference of the Parties, otherwise known as COP, first met in Berlin in March 1995 to assess the progress in dealing with climate change. Just over two years later, COP3 met in Kyoto and adopted the Kyoto Protocol, one of the early global agreements to cut emissions to address climate change. Twenty-four years later, you would hope we would be on track to take the action we need to, as a planet, to address climate change. But sadly, even if all the commitments are kept from COP twenty six, then we are looking at a rise in temperature, topping 2.4 degrees by the end of this century, when we know we must stay below 1.5. Sadly, many commitments at COP twenty six were recycled and had already been made, and despite some steps forward, we're clearly way short of where we need to be. This is why our amendment is focused on costed actions. You can see they're costed from previous budget amendments, if you're interested, we can now take as a council, as whilst we urgently need more government support and a national Green New Deal, we need to be doing everything we can right now as a council to reduce emissions and address the climate crisis. Thank you. Please vote for this motion.
Thank you. I call upon councillor Diamond to second this amendment, please.
Hello? Oh, yes, hon, thank you. Congratulations to councillor Bellbin for her excellent speech, although she has now left. And thank you to the proposers for bringing this motion and for giving us the opportunity to add amendments that actually include local action that we can take. Many will agree that overall COP twenty six was a cop-out, a failure by a government mired in corruption and sleaze. It's well documented, there were over 500 fossil fuel lobbyists at COP, and that these lobbyists' voices were heard far louder than loads of children and young people and people in the global south, who are already facing the brunt of the climate crisis. It is a travesty that money for reparations and mitigation did not materialise. Therefore, it is incumbent on us to take local action now, and I hope lots of these amendments will be carried so that we can begin to take the radical action necessary. And that includes on reducing use of cars, which is really the elephant in the room when it comes to climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you pass your microphone to councillor Jones, sat behind you, please? I forgot to tell you that. And after councillor Jones, can councillor Peter Price stand by, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Like many, I looked at COP twenty six with a great expectation. I was hoping to be the cabinet member responsible for this, but the electorate said otherwise. When I looked at what came out of COP twenty six, it was with a sense of incredibility, kind of just disappointment in everything that was being said. We've got a government that's looking to increase extraction of petroleum out of the North Sea, a government that's looking to open up new coal mining, and with ill-considered support for the Australians for the way that they're raping the planet and burning fossil fuels at a ridiculous rate, simply to prop up their own budgets. It's not acceptable. Now, in Labour's motion, we do put out a list of things that this city has done that has pioneered. There's some have been derisive towards and others have embraced. The reason for putting that in there is simple. Sheffield has a history of delivering. Sheffield, like many other cities in the UK, have shown that if we are to deliver on climate change promises, and that's all they are at the moment, uncosted, unfunded, unintended promises, I guess, we will need to look to the cities. It's the cities that will deliver the changes we need, and if we are to do that, we need our hands untied. As I look towards councillor Johnson right now, I know full well that the biggest issue he has is not his ambition, nor is it the ambition of the wider administration of Sheffield City Council. It is the fact that we have been stripped of powers and resources to deliver the things we want. We can do this, we can deliver the change that this city needs, that our citizens demand, but we need government to stop talking the talk and actually get those really short, stubby fat arms of theirs into their really deep pockets. They've got lots of money, they can afford it, they can find the golden money trees when they need to. It's about time they delivered and gave us the money to save this planet, or there'll be nothing left. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Peter Price, granddad of the house.
Hello? Oh, thanks, Lord Mayor. Really, I just want to stand up and talk a little bit about the record, particularly the Waste to Energy Plant, which is an amazing story. The fact that it heats 2,000 homes, the energy-consuming Ponsford, the town hall, Central Library, Children's Hospital, the museum, most of this place, and three hotels out of one boiler, replacing thousands of boilers across this city, is an amazing record. It's not surprising, because that has been copied across Europe, in Germany, in Sweden and Belgium. Most big cities are going to be converting their waste to energy as a proper use. And it's not good liberal to say it's better to recycle. The energy used in recycling plastics and the pollution caused by the massive transport costs of carting this stuff around, of cleaning it, separating it from acrylics and then washing it and melting it, is a damn sight bigger use than converting to energy like this city is doing. And I think this city ought to be proud and ought to sell it from the rooftops of its record in what that's achieved. I remember the debate 20 odd years ago, we went down that route, it was opposed then by the opposition, what happened to be proper Tories in those days, because of the cost. Over the years, it saved this city millions and millions and tonnes of waste that would be in the city. of cleaning it, separating it from acrylics and then washing it and melting it, is a damn sight bigger use than converting to energy like this city is doing. And I think this city ought to be proud and ought to sell it from the rooftops of its record in what that's achieved. I remember the debate 20 odd years ago, we went down that route. It was opposed then by the opposition, what happened to be proper Tories in those days, because of the cost. Over the years, it saved this city millions and millions and tonnes of waste that would have been excreted from all those boilers that would have been in place. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Shafak Mohammed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I do like to follow speeches by Peter Price. They are great. But I'll stick to the actual amendments and notice of motions, in particular to the Green amendment. But before I go there, I mean, we've got this ambition to be carbon neutral by 2030. And one asks us the question, despite declaring the climate emergency, what is to be actually done? And just look at the Clean Air Zone. £24 million of government money just sat there for 18 months. To do what? To tweak a slight change in the criteria for taxis. Instead of making them all electric, we've gone to Euro 6s. Well, you could have done that quick then and just rolled on to it, but you sat back and waited 18 months. You know, I didn't see anything else that radical. You're not really changing that much more. If that's what you were going to do, just get on with it, rather than just kind of sit back and do nothing. But for me, to the Greens is, you're no longer in opposition. You don't need to bring notice of amendments to full council. You operate still under a strong leader model, which means actually that you sit round that cabinet table, you know, I think you'd call it the executive. So actually, have some courage, councillor Johnson and your colleagues, and actually bring this as a cabinet report to your next executive and actually get it passed there, because that's where you can actually get things done. You can come and debate it here. And I know we're the students' kind of union here, and they like to debate round here. I mean, I was here 20 years ago. But, you know, the grown-up politics is done down the road at the town hall. And that's what we've done. We brought the town hall here. So my advice to you is, if you genuinely believed in this, and it's all costed and everything, I look forward to this going to your next executive. Then me and Joe Otten can call in for scrutiny, can't we? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mohammed. Yeah, we've got time for one more before the right of reply. Councillor Milson?
Yeah, sorry, I should have... I didn't think we'd get to you, but we have. Thank you very much. I want to refer to clause G in the Liberal Democrat amendment here about food waste recycling. And we have heard the opposition view regarding food waste recycling before. And there's already an agreement on this. I believe the criticism is that there's some delay in bringing that in. Residents in our city are reading about it too, on leaflets dropping through their letterboxes from the Liberal Democrats. And I'm sympathetic to the restraints of what can be included on an A3 double-sided leaflet. But I do think it would have been beneficial to our citizens to have included the information that there is government funding for a food waste recycling scheme. And if we rush it through now, we miss out on £3.1 million. I don't think this council is in the position to refuse that kind of money. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Milson. We're now going to move to the vote on amendment number six. Sorry, right of reply.
Sorry, councillor. It is very rare I stand up, but thank you.
And I can just see you.
The only thing I would say, I think it's disappointing that, again, anybody that works on taxi licensing will know that we've lost a lot of taxi drivers through the pandemic and it not being financially viable for them to continue in business. And I think it's absolutely right that we've continued to consult with them. I think it's absolutely right that we've made sure that the government funding is in place to help subsidise these people staying living, in a living, and upgrade their cars. And I think the people of Sheffield will be grateful for that. And just generally, again, get the deal as good as we can for the people of Sheffield, because the people that live around the Clean Air Zone are some of the poorest neighbourhoods in this city and the ones that most need the government funding to give them the subsidisation on new vehicles. And so I'd just like people to support the motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. We are now going to vote on amendment number six, moved by councillor Sangha. Are we voting in parts or as a whole? Councillor Phipps?
Yeah, in parts, Lord Mayor. So in voting for, we're voting against G and J. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Chin Chen, are you voting in parts? Councillor Otten? Councillor? No, Hurst? No, okay then. So all those in favour of amendment number six, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those against? Any abstentions? That's carried. I'm now going to move to the vote on amendment number seven, that was moved by councillor Phipps. Are we voting in parts?
Voting in parts, please, Lord Mayor.
I'll take you first, councillor Hurst.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In voting for this amendment, we are voting against M2 through to 4, 7 through to 10 and 12 through to 19.
Wow. Councillor Chin Chen?
In voting for the amendment, I'll be against M14 and M17. 19.
Did you get the last bit? Yeah. Councillor Otten?
Lord Mayor, in view of the feelings people have expressed about voting in parts to the nth degree, we've decided to abstain on the Green M altogether in voting for.
Thank you. All those in favour of amendment number seven, please raise your hands. Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? This is carried in parts? Oh, goodness me. Right, carried in parts, M1, 5 to 6, 11, 20, 21 plus N plus 10. Lost on M2. Sounds like a motorway. To 4, 7, to 10, plus 12 to 19. And if you do shorthand, you might have got that. Okay. So... Where are we now? Oh, right, we move to the... All those in favour of the substantive motion?
Lord Mayor.
Yeah, I've missed something.
Lord Mayor, can we vote in parts on the substantive, please?
Certainly can, councillors.
You'll probably like me more if I don't say we need to revisit all the sub clauses of the Green M. So we'll stick with an abstention overall on the Green M, though some of them may have a little bit of merit. And we'll be voting against the Labour's clauses, G to L and otherwise voting for. Thank you.
Councillor Chin Chen?
As I did with the amendments, and then in voting for the substantive, I'll be voting against part L of the original Labour motion and abstaining on E, G and K of the original Labour motion.
Okay. Okay. All those in favour of the substantive motion, please raise your hands now. Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Well, I'm really, really proud of you, because it's 25 past five. Right, this is about representation, delegated authority and related issues. So let's get this done quick, and we could have first. It's moved by councillor Hurst and seconded by councillor Weatherall, that approval be given to changes to membership of committees, et cetera, the appointment of representatives to serve on external bodies and related issues as detailed in the schedule circulated at this meeting. Councillor Hurst?
Formally booled, ma'am.
Thank you. Councillor Weatherall? Wow, that's amazing. I'm now going to move to the vote... What? Have I... Yeah? Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, I'm getting tired. I'm now going to move to the vote on that motion. All those in favour? Any against? Thank you. We still made it in time. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great weekend and look after yourselves and stay safe.
Please, the abstentions for the law, ma'am.